I'm at a post. We got a few nurses in the house. Just waiting on the mail?
This is the secret beach in Hawaii.
Oh gorgeous. Is that an actual picture of yours or is that one of the?
That was my actual picture that we took.
Gorgeous.
It was absolutely.
I thought it was like one of those ones that comes up automatic?
No, why?
That is fab- fabulous. Um, I have not. I've been to Hawaii and yeah. Oh, sorry. Yes. I walked away. I walked away. Sorry. Go ahead. Do we have ones that are already signed up out there? All right. Well, any more starting at six thirty? So go get, could you get me the ones that are already signed on? And then leave one there and then I'll just make an announcement if anybody hasn't signed up. Then come up to the podium and sign in. Does that sound make sense? Bring in what, what you can now. I will seriously try not to breathe on you. No? Do they go up and down? I don't like this either. Our desks are much nicer.
There's uh, somebody having a heart attack on the front steps right now.
Oh Jesus. We have a medical emergency? Oh. Frank Hanson's having a heart attack on the front steps. They just, three nurses just ran out. It's Frank Hanson. Yeah, someone's up there. It's Frank Hanson on the front steps. Thank you. Who, Julian? Yeah, she, she emailed me earlier. It's a big crowd, huh? Biggest Emma.
Well, they wish that uh, forty yard, that was a whole crowd that was coming.
Oh, the event, the event of all day?
And uh, and it was a six hour master plan.
Oh, yeah. Oh, what was the one with um, yeah, the master plan? The one you couldn't even move in here. I was plastered against the wall. Yeah.
Six hours.
I remember that. That was under Joe Sullivan.
No, no, that was the forty yard. That was standing when you couldn't even.
Is there a question about the four neck pitch name?
Yes.
So is the public able to like ask those questions?
No, it's, it's just, they comment. Right, they just comment. It's going back and forth. They can ask comments if they tell us what they think we should do. But, gonna try to keep it to the two minutes, just really interested time because there's so many people here.
Is there a total limit to how many comments can go before or do you say it's a little?
I, I mean technically I need to let everybody speak, but it's gonna be a long night because people are gonna, I mean, we just have these two sign up sheets so far. Um, and then there'll be people on Zoom. So, I mean, it's probably at least gonna be two or three hours of people talking. We lost, we don't have the mayor and we lost our entire administration. There they come. Is he okay? No? Did they take him away?
They got him. He has breathing. And he, well, he had his head going down.
Are you scared?
He's shocked a couple times. I don't know what you want to do. They all came in after watching.
We have to continue. We can't tell them we're going because of it. Um, did you hear? They had his head and they shocked him a couple times and he doesn't put it off. It's horrible. Jesus. Way to start us off. Do you know where she is? Where's the administration?
Can you look at the speaker list for a second or no?
Please. Thank you.
Can you put Dr. Kay on as a guest? He appears to be just somewhere. He doesn't want to be first. That's all.
Good evening, everyone. Good evening, everyone. Can I get, have your attention, please? Good evening. Thank you, everyone, for joining us. Um, I would like to call the Monday, April eighth, school committee meeting here at Town Hall to order. Um, let me just give you an over, over uh, overall idea of how the night's gonna go. So we are going to, or I am going to ask for a request uh, to open the public hearing. And then Mr. Lee is gonna do a presentation of the FY twenty five budget. And then I will open up the floor to the school committee members and to our student reps for their comments. And then at that point, I'm gonna open it up to the floor. Um, there are sign up sheets. Um, hopefully, if you would like to speak, you've signed up. If not, we will put a sign up sheet on the podium. So once I have everybody who's on the list that has spoken, I'll just ask if anybody else in the room is interested who hasn't signed up that would like to speak. And then we'll also go to Zoom. Um, for our school committee meetings, people can also dial in from Zoom. Um, Rachel Horak, Dr. Horak is not with us. She was in Canada to see the eclipse. So she is actually dialing in remote. So any votes that we take tonight will be roll called votes. Okay? So with that, at this time, I request a motion to open the public hearing. I have a motion by Ms. Tuffy. And a second by Mr. Rolo. Oh, excuse me, Mr. Fogarty. Um, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That is unanimous. With that, I turn it over to Mr. Lee for his presentation.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, good evening, everybody. I'm gonna walk you through a number of slides, many of which you have seen before. They are part of previous packages, but as this is the public hearing, I thought it was important to be thorough and kind of stop from the beginning of our work. For those of you following at home, you can see it on the Zoom screen. For those of you who are in the audience, there is a television screen up front that will uh, walk through the slides as I go. Um, members of the committee, you have a packet in front of you um, that I can discuss as we continue. So the mission statement of the Braintree Public Schools i- is, is something that we've had for a number of years, but it is still in play. And based on the decisions that we've been trying to make over the last several weeks, I think it's more important than ever to ensure that we know why we're here uh, and the students that we serve. In terms of outcomes, uh, Braintree has always outperformed uh, its expectations of, of, when you compare Braintree to other communities, Braintree has excelled. Uh, the type of education our students have received over time, literally decades, is commendable. Uh, work started far before I ever got here and work that continues today, based on the strong families, the outstanding students, and the excellent educators that we have. As you all know, we have ten schools presently. The slide is meaning as of today. Um, inadequate, the kindergarten center, uh, Flaherty, Highlands, Hollis, Liberty, Morrison, Ross, East, South, and Braintree High School. Over time, our enrollment had been fluctuating with, in essence, bubbles going through, but ever since the pandemic, two thousand nineteen, twenty, you can see a decline in enrollment. So in that window of time, those lines begin to converge in a downward fashion. Uh, and those enrollment numbers have dipped. So that's been a trend over time, but it, again, it was accelerated during the pandemic. On this slide, you can see the enrollment figures over the last slightly over ten years. Uh, over that timeframe, it was two thousand eighteen, which was a high watermark, fifty seven hundred students. Uh, but you can also see, uh, beginning in two thousand twenty one, these numbers are of October of school years. Uh, we lost approximately four hundred kids from the previous year, and that number has remained relatively consistent. Uh, we are still down significantly since the pandemic. Just to provide some context in terms of what Braintree has been able to do with the resources it has been allowed. Uh, on this slide, it comes from the Mass Desi Radar benchmarking uh, site. You can see that Braintree in two thousand twenty two spent sixteen thousand nine dollars per, per pupil. And in a wealth-based peer group of ten, we ranked third from the lowest, only three hundred and fifty five dollars from the lowest peer group. In terms of staffing levels, again, from the same source, you can see again that Braintree has been able to do more with less over time. So Braintree compared to the state with respect to teachers, has fewer teachers. Braintree with respect to paraprofessionals, uh, and paraprofessionals working in non-special education environments, less than the state average. In terms of leadership, whether it be district administration, instructional leaders, or school leaders, we have less. In terms of student support, we have had less. And in terms of clerical and tech support, we have had less than the state average. And again, I, this, to me, is testimony to the hard work being done by our staff members on a daily basis. With respect to funding, uh, these are trends over time. Uh, you can see, beginning in FY fourteen, uh, the, the middle column, the school budget and the percentage change, that over the course of, of years, we have averaged somewhere between three point eight and five point five percent increase annually over the previous um, budgets. In FY twenty two, you can remember that's COVID again, the, the ramifications of COVID. We actually had a negative increase or a decrease in funding. Uh, in this past year, we did have an increase of seven point six four percent. But some of that was a replacement of one-time money that we had used to stay afloat in the previous year. Where our money comes from, uh, fifty four million dollars of it comes from Townes General Fund, twenty million dollars from Chapter Seventy. Uh, we have a percentage of our overall budget comes from grants. Uh, circuit breaker is reimbursement for extraordinary special education costs. And revolving funds, which is, in essence, money in, money out. If you think of something like transportation, that'd be an example. Money comes in, but then it goes out to pay for buses and drivers. Uh, kindergarten would be another example of a revolving fund. Tuition gets paid. We pay teachers with it. The money comes in and the money goes out. This present year, FY twenty four, you can see that we had initially budgeted seventy four million, seven hundred and thirty two thousand, eight hundred and sixty nine dollars. Uh, and they were all categorized in, in the following articles that are above. You can see the line that says curriculum instruction. That is where our teachers reside. Uh, sixty million or almost sixty one million of our budget, uh, it falls into that category. And it is eighty one percent of our overall budget. Within that line is also special education. Uh, special education costs represent thirty five percent of our overall budget, not just the curriculum instruction line, but the overall budget. Uh, we have excellent programs within our district that services kids, uh, and allows them to stay in district, which is what we desire. Some of the challenges that we've, that we've had over the past year, um, somewhat related to COVID. We've had increased numbers in special education. We have an increased number of preschool students who have been presenting with more complex needs than in the past. Uh, out of district tuition costs have risen, uh, which I'll get into in a second. We've had more students moving into Braintree with substantially separate placements or out of district placements. Uh, again, this is a function of COVID. And then inflation has impacted us both in transportation and in staffing. This past year, this slide really focuses on the cost of out of district placements. Going into FY twenty four, the Operational Services Division of the state allowed private uh, schools that service special education students to raise their rates by fourteen percent. That's worth about six hundred to seven hundred thousand for the town of Braintree. It was a unique increase. It had been running between one and two percent prior to that. So you can imagine the impact on our overall budget. In terms of COVID, uh, with respect to preschool, we have seen in the last few years, FY twenty three and FY twenty four, a significant increase in the number of students of that age that require more services than they had previously. You can see on this chart from FY twenty two, our numbers were down almost twenty percent. FY twenty one, down seven percent. FY twenty two, down two percent. But then, and this is when kids of COVID, when COVID was occurring, would have been born, as they reached that age of three where they can become eligible for services, those numbers began to increase dramatically at eleven and thirty two percent. Our out of district numbers have remained relatively stable over time. Uh, what has changed in this regard, again, is the tuition cost that private schools are able to charge. On this chart, you can see the red line represents out of district tuitions. You can see the linear acceleration of the cost of those placements. Uh, we are projecting a slightly lower cost for next year. FY twenty four, again, was when the fourteen percent increase came into effect, which has had a dramatic effect on, on the expenses of sending kids to certain schools. We do get some money back from the state in the form of circuit breaker. Circuit breaker is money that is given to districts to pay for extraordinary costs for individual students. There's a threshold number. Beyond that, the state usually reimburses us somewhere between seventy two to seventy five cents on the dollar. In FY twenty five, we expect three million dollars to come back to us in circuit breaker offset, um, but that, we always factored that into the budget. We had been using um, circuit breaker reserves. We were trying to save up circuit breaker to make sure that we could pay and budget moving forward as opposed to receiving the money in arrears. Uh, you can see on this chart that the balance is in the yellow. Uh, we had begun a good process of saving up those money, but with the budget constraints that we've had over the last several years, we've begun to spend down that money. And next year, we anticipate that we will have none left in terms of savings. We'll still get the reimbursements, but we will not have them as a balance at the end of the year. In terms of other factors around special education that has increased our cost, since two thousand fifteen, a hundred and seventy eight percent increase of students moving into Braintree who are already on an IEP. Close to forty percent uh, since FY twenty. And since FY twenty one, forty percent of those students have presented with substantially separate placements or out of district placements. And these are services that kids need. We absolutely need to be providing them, but it does give you a flavor for how some of our costs have increased over time. So the challenges that we've faced in this year, uh, coming to put together the FY twenty five budget, the vast majority of our budget is people. A size of a deficit of eight million dollars requires significant reduction in staff to close the deficit gap. Uh, I would say approximately eighty four percent of our budget is actually people. Increasing fees, and we've discussed that at prior meetings, uh, puts an additional burden on families, and, and a lot of families are already struggling. Uh, we know the impact these burdens have on them, uh, but it's something we needed to explore. Larger class sizes affect both learning and the overall culture and climate of a school. And we have limited control over the growth of special education costs because there are laws that govern that. If we eliminate programs, we run the risk of never being able to bring those programs back. And the last time a significant reduction in services occurred was back in two thousand and three, and many of the programs that were cut back then still have not come back to the schools at this point. And closing any school impacts the town's relationship with the MSPA. So the impact of level funding, uh, we had come into the late fall, early winter with a, an ask of level services, meaning that to keep what we currently have moving into next year of eighty three million, five hundred thousand, which represented a ten point six percent increase over existing. If we explore a level funded budget, that is seventy five million, five hundred thousand, zero percent. The impact of schools has been described before, but I'm just gonna review them quickly, um, just to refresh people's memory. When we looked at the impact it would have at Braintree High School, we talked in terms of twenty three positions that could be lost, one point six four three million cut. The result would be larger class sizes across all subject areas, reductions in electives offered each year, modification of graduation requirements, and increase in studies being taken by students. In the same, similar conversation, when we looked at the middle schools, a level funded budget would result in nine point nine positions being lost at South Middle School, seven hundred and twenty seven thousand dollars cut. At East Middle School, eleven point three positions lost, eight hundred and thirty two thousand, five hundred cut. We were looking at program losses of seventh grade world language, academic levels, media, and team structures. At the elementary school, again, we had a At the elementary school, again, we had a meeting devoted just to this. A level-funded budget could result in reducing classroom sections by 21 positions and cutting reading and math specialists by seven positions. We looked at maintaining one reading specialist per elementary school with the assumption that there'd be no more than five elementary schools operating at that point. We talked about eliminating media in the elementary schools as an elective, and to replace that elective with math support provided by a smaller number of math specialists, approximately 3.8 FTEs of full-time people. I've been asked to present a budget this evening at $79.1 million with some parameters. One of the parameters was to empty Manadequid. The other was not to close any elementary schools. And the third was to postpone the opening of Old South for one year. To do that, we had to make certain assumptions. One, the town can identify the financial resources to cover the increased expenses. A budget of $79,200,000 would be a 4.9% increase. And again, this would assume that Manadequid closes and Old South goes unused. What it would do at 79 million is keep all current reading and math specialists in the elementary schools. It would keep class sizes in the elementary schools below 25, specifically in grades three and four, lower in the grades one and two. It would preserve art and music in both the middle school and the high school. It would preserve world language offerings in grade seven. And although it seems inconsequential, it would also fund a technology security software that we use to prevent attacks on the district. To close Manadequid, kindergartens would need to return to the elementary schools. This would save the MSKC administrative cost. Most homeschools can receive their students. Flaherty cannot. It would need some students to go to either Ross or Hollis. Classes fit, but they are not the most efficiently sized. The offset savings of utilities, custodians, and maintenance, this money resides on the town side, would have to be credited to the schools in order for us to meet the budgetary targets. This is what it would look like. At Flaherty, there'd be one kindergarten classroom with 20 students in it. At Highlands, there'd be four. Two special education programs and two regular education kindergartens with sizes of 21 and 22. At Hollis, they would need to absorb seven Flaherty students. But in doing so, they would have five kindergarten sections. They would have a specialized kindergarten program, three regular education kindergarten programs, and two half-day sections for students that require that. At Liberty, they would take on four kindergarten classes, one special education program, three regular education kindergarten classes of sizes 17, 18, and 17. At Morrison, they would have three kindergarten classes, one specialized program in terms of kindergarten, two regular ed programs, one at 19, one at 20 students. And at Ross, they too would absorb seven Flaherty students. They would have three kindergarten sections, one specialized program, two regular ed programs, one at 19 and one at 17. The other thing that we were able to take a look at while doing this number, at 79 million, the choice would be available of accepting larger elementary class sizes in schools or redistricting to realize maximum efficiencies. This choice would not be available at a level-funded option. What it would look like, and using our projected numbers for next year, were we not to redistrict and reduce, and I'll get to that slide shortly, how we get to 79 million? But the class sizes at Flaherty in grades one, 18, 18, and 17. In terms of grade two, 18, 18, 17. Grade three, 19, 18, 20, and 20. Fourth grade, 15, 19, and 18. Highlands, 20, 20, and 20 in grade one, 23, 23, 23 in grade two, 19, 19, 19, and 18 in grade three, 20, 19, 19, and 19 in grade four. Hollis, grade one would be 20, 19, and 19. Grade two, 22, 20, and 19. Grade three, 18, 19, and 18. And grade four, 23, 23, and 24. At Liberty, 20, 19, and 19 in grade one, grade two, 23, 23, 22. Grade three, 22, 22, 21, 21. And grade four, 24, 24, 24. Morrison, grade one, 17, 16, 16. Grade two, 24, 24, 23. Grade three, 20, 23, 24. Grade four, 20, 23, 24. At Ross, the numbers are 18 and 17 at grade one, 20 and 19 at grade two, 17 and 18 at grade three, 16 and 17 at grade four. This is an option, again, that is available. This does not require redistricting. These numbers in certain schools are larger than ideal. But listening to the public talk about their feelings around redistricting, I wanted to put it on the table as an option for the committee to consider. If we were to redistrict, these numbers would be slightly lower across the board and more evenly balanced. A $79.1 million budget does require the following cuts. Again, it is closing Manadequid and not opening Old South. There's a potential of $850,000 worth of savings there, the administrative costs that are currently at Manadequid, plus the operational savings that you would realize by not operating Manadequid and Old South simultaneously. To increase elementary class sizes or redistrict, that would be the choice. If we made a reduction of nine people, that's a $675,000 savings, but it gets you the numbers I showed you on the previous slides. If we were to eliminate media at the elementary level, that is 3.8 positions, and that's a savings of $285,000. At the middle school, if we were to reduce grade eight writing, grade five math lab, media, phys ed, that's 7.2 positions or people cut, it's $510,000 worth of savings. At the high school, a reduction of one teacher in each subject area, to be decided based on enrollment numbers, we were looking at eight positions or eight people, $668,000. Special education efficiencies, it's a reduction of six people, savings of $393,000. Reduction in administrative support, 2.5 positions or $180,000. The district would be looking at a superintendent search process next year. If they chose not to use an outside vendor to help with that search, it could save $50,000. Next year is also a negotiations year. To prioritize certain meetings for having our legal counsel present and opting on other situations not to have them present could save approximately $10,000. Cutting professional development monies from our overall district budget, $80,000. Cutting the director budget, which are textbook supplies and materials, $100,000. Increased fees, which is, we spent an evening at school committee discussing transportation and athletic fees, this is a savings to the district, not to families, of $600,000. Cut from the central office of $80,000. Technology, this is both people and software, a reduction of $115,000. And a reduction in our nursing staff of one position, $33,000 is $4.5 million. It's a reduction of 41.5 positions, but it gets us to $79.1 million. What it also does not mean is that these reductions would not be taken. We would not decrease elementary staffing by an additional nine people, which we had already proposed. That would cost $675,000. We would not cut seven math and reading specialists at the elementary level. That will cost us $525,000. We would not reduce art, music, PE at the elementary level, returning 2.4 positions or $180,000 into the budget. We would not eliminate middle school teams, would be putting back eight positions, costing $600,000. We would not reduce language-based and LECE math at East, that would put back into the budget one position of $75,000. We would not reduce music and art at the music school, at the middle school. That's two positions or $150,000. We would not reduce world language at the middle school, that's grade seven I referenced earlier. That's the return of three positions of $225,000 into the budget. We would not reduce music and art at the high school, that's a return of three positions of $225,000. We would not reduce world language at the high school, that's the return of two positions or $150,000. We would not eliminate the home tutoring program at the high school, that's two positions or $178,000. We would not further decrease high school staff, which would have increased class sizes and reduced electives, that's seven positions or $525,000. We would not reduce administrative support further, that's three positions or $125,000. And we would not eliminate the tech security software I referenced on our previous page. So we would not be taking reductions of $3.7 million, but we also would not be cutting 49.4 people from the budget. All those proposals would bring us to a list of articles, and as you recall, articles are what the school committee ultimately votes on. So we have developed the articles with the $79.1 million budget in mind. You can see that on the last page on the screen, for those of you watching at home or in the audience. You can see that the real change is under Article Four, Curriculum Instruction, that is where our teachers are. And it is us putting back into the budget a large number of people, 50 in essence, to work with our students and to educate our youngest members of the town. This assumes that the $650,000 that actually resides on the town side related to Manadequid and Old South are returned to the school system budget. But ultimately, it results in a budget of $79,119,203, or a 4.8% increase over existing. And at that point, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Lee. Excuse me. And with that, I will open it up to the school committee for any questions. Who wants to start? I know you have lots of questions. Ms. Tepfe?
All right. So I would like to know what the MSBA fine would be for not reopening the Old South compared to the fine for closing Highlands next year.
We did not intend, we did not believe that there would be a fine for closing Highlands. That we've taken that off the table, and we have not, I have not contacted the MSBA regarding Old South.
So following up on that, if we keep Old South vacant next year, and we know that we're likely to have to pay a fine because we have MSBA money for renovations, and then we consolidate Highlands and Liberty for the following year, are we going to be fined by MSBA twice? Once for not using Old South next year, and next, for the following year, for consolidating a school that received a new roof? I, I don't think we have, I would like to know that information before I make a decision on this budget. Okay. So I think it's very important to limit transitions for children. And so we know from Mr. Lee's presentation, we have some students from Flaherty that will be transferred to Hollis or Liberty. Ross. So then the following year, are they going to be transitioned again? How are we gonna, if we consolidate elementary schools as a second transition for those children, correct? They get, they have.
Right. As described, the intent would be to have them go to kindergarten at either Ross or Hollis, but then return to Flaherty for grade one.
So the research says that transitions are difficult for some children, and they recommend limiting them, and I agree with that. I do like having the children in their homeschools, but there doesn't appear to be room for them all. My next question is, what will happen to Colbert? How much savings would we realize if we closed Colbert as an administration building? And is there a place for it to go?
The answer to your first question is embedded in your second one. We'd have to determine where Colbert could go to decide what, if any, savings it would be.
Just so people know, Colbert is the administrative building. It's where central office is.
So I do have an issue with cuts to any staffing positions, but in particular, I want to address cuts to media. Media specialists are really vital in providing guidance to students in a rapidly changing digital world, especially in light of developments in artificial intelligence. Artificial intelligence is really embedded everywhere right now. And our students need to learn how to deal with it. We need to build a culture in our classrooms about how we're going to use AI, empowering children to think critically about AI, and giving them the tools to use it safely. I, I think we would be shortchanging our students if we eliminated those media specialists. I did attend a webinar from Harvard Graduate School of Education last week on artificial intelligence, and their take was, start engaging with kids on AI as soon as they are verbal. To thrive in a digital world, everyone, everyone needs to develop effective routines of inquiry and develop the habit of recognizing what media is in their environment. So I, I need, I think we need to rethink eliminating media from our schools at this point in time. And finally, I, I think that it is shortsighted to cut assistant principals and guidance counselors. One of the functions of the assistant principal is to deal with discipline issues. If a student is being disruptive in class, the teacher has the option of sending them to the assistant principal's office, who will work with them until they're ready to return to class, or refer them to guidance. We have seen in other districts that increased class sizes, the removal of assistant principals, and a reduction in guidance class counselors make classroom management more difficult at the same time as we are increasing a teacher's workload. So I think we need to give some thought to cutting those positions.
Just to be clear, there's no proposal that I'm putting forth that has assistant principals cut.
So that's, that's changed since the last.
I've never put it on a slide.
Okay.
Anything else?
That's it for now.
Mayor Joyce?
Thank you. I would actually just like to start with a moment of prayer or thoughts to whatever higher spirit you believe in. We had a very dear friend of our community on his way into Town Hall this evening, suffer a medical emergency. Fred Hanson is a reporter with The Ledger and has been, for longer than I've been alive, we joked about it during the campaign when he was interviewing me, that he started at The Ledger about a month before I was born. But he's certainly been to so many of our community events, and he would have loved to be sitting here, taking this all in and coming up with a great article that we could all enjoy in the morning. So if I could just offer a moment for us to think about him this evening. Thank you. While the town's current financial position cannot afford more than a level-funded budget, I do, as a parent and resident, support the funding level that's presented this evening as proposed by the Finance and Operations Committee and moved through this evening and discussed. My office plans to incorporate this ask as part of an override option that we are working to prepare as part of our fiscal year 2025 budget. Without an override, we would, without an override being successful, we will not be able to afford more than a level-funded budget. But we will be working, and we would be working with the 75-5 going into fiscal year 25. We plan to give the voters a chance to step up in support of our funding needs that are not allowed by our current tax level, our current level of tax collection. The conversations at school committee in the last few weeks have been fueled with panic and uncertainty, and I realize that discussing our very real financial limitations on the town's. and I realize that discussing our very real financial limitations on the town side has brought forward this conversation to more and more families, at more and more community gatherings, and has certainly brought us here together this evening. To add fuel to the conversation, our preliminary discussion involving closing elementary home schools, which began publicly last week, appeared rushed and out of nowhere to some people. I would challenge that this conversation has not been out of nowhere completely and was hinted at year over year in conversations around redistricting and what to do with Old South and many of, and recognizing that many of our aging schools that we have not been able to keep up with maintenance are a reality. Students certainly face learning in buildings with heating issues, all sorts of issues. We're very, we realize that. The recent decision to delay Highlands closure was in line with needing a more detailed financial analysis on the complete savings as it relates to all the home elementary schools and we're still sorting through, as the superintendent mentioned, ramifications and payback requirements on the new roof that we just placed on the building at Highlands and an impact that that has with the Massachusetts School Building Authority or the MSBA. We're not certain of the true financial savings that allowed us next year or over the next few years, which is why we pressed pause. If anything, all these conversations have led us to realizations that we need to come together and make a real sustainable investment into the services that we have grown to appreciate and value as a way of life in Braintree. I believe we should have been having these conversations, laying out a plan of action for longer than just the past few weeks. We have had over the years, many leaders cast warnings about this, for lack of a better term, fiscal reckoning, but we haven't spent time charting a possible path forward that would actually get us out of the hole we're in. We've certainly discussed in some ways an override, but an override is not the only action that we need to take moving forward. We need to be conscious that whatever additional ask we make of taxpayers is thoughtful and tied to a multi-year plan. As I've stated before, throwing 18 million dollars or some value like that with no management and no multi-year plan ends up in us needing another override in three years. We've ran a lot of scenarios. I recognize that times are tough financially, groceries cost more, childcare for families that have young preschool-aged children is extraordinary. Many of our senior residents are on fixed incomes and because assessments are generally going up, the value of your home is generally going up. Whether taxes, tax rates technically increase or not, people are already paying more every year to live in Braintree. Getting into Braintree is a huge financial commitment and I realize that. But we're here, where we are today has not happened overnight and I'm not here to point blame. I'm here to manage a way to stability in a way that can make sense to all residents, families, seniors, those looking to move to Braintree and want to know that we are working diligently with the tax dollars made available to us. We have to strategically unravel the fact that schools' expenses are growing at 5% when the town's revenues are growing at two to three. On top of the fact that we have enrollment numbers that are down in the last, in the last few years, enrollment has decreased by 10%. We need to stabilize our spending, build a long-term plan and consolidate some resources. This involves management and an override. This involves coming together to support the budget proposed and, and being proposed to move forward by Finance and Operations. At the end of the day, I do believe in allowing voters to have a say in what we do, but I want to make sure that we all have as much information as possible to move forward together as a community. This isn't just a discussion for schools, as I've said before, even though we're having it here tonight and it's been publicly made, people have been made more aware of the challenges with the schools. This is a conversation for everyone, for all of our services, for everything that makes Braintree Braintree, and I'm hoping that the conversation here tonight brings us together because that's the only way we're going to pull out of this. I really appreciate you all being here and I look forward to your conversation this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Joyce. Mr. Rollo?
Ms. Tuffey had mentioned cuts to guidance. Is that, I didn't see that on here. Is in the 79.1, are we, we're not, are we cutting anything in guidance or?
Sorry. Down to the bottom. It's no, it's not on the table.
Okay.
Mr. Lynch?
Here we go. Just wanted to say thanks to the chair and definitely thanks to the superintendent over the past month. I've talked to a lot of people and nobody's questioning what the numbers actually are and where we're at. So I think that's a testament to the work you've done. It's more of just what the path forward is and that's kind of the comfort. So thanks for that. It's definitely the busiest week. As a school committee member, for me, I talk to people probably a couple hours each day, got all the perspectives of the town from each side, whether that be our side, schools, parents, people without kids that live in the town and it's a pretty diverse array of opinions. The thing that, you know, I found universal agreement on is nobody thinks the kids deserve to lose any schools or teachers, you know, so that's what we all do have in common. How that plays out is still remains to be seen, but we're, we're definitely going to have to disagree and have some arguments on stuff. So if we get through those arguments, I mean, hopefully we don't, if someone disagrees with you, we don't be like, oh, he's a bad person for not taking that argument because I don't think that will be helpful in the long run on that side. So for this budget, my mindset so far on this, so I want to hear what people from the town, the rest of the committee members have to say before we give a final vote. But if that 79 number, looks like we'd probably need 4 million in an override from the school, from the town to get to there. And then the question is, do we send that budget or do you send the 83? If I voted yes on that 79, that, I don't think that would be the end of fighting for that 83. I still think we have time to work on options. If we had the 79, things like, I know Mayor Joyce, you had free cash, not saying we haven't, I know you have a ton of things on towns, but you know, an opportunity to argue some of that money comes to us. We can still work with town council, state reps, see if there's any grants out there. And, you know, I talked to my friends in the union, which was, it's pretty good to have friends that you can disagree with and argue, but know we're still on the same page. So I know we proposed something to the union, which I completely understand why they would say no on it, but there was a, we asked for a freeze on some teachers and I get their side of it. But, you know, if we're going to go to the town, it's unprecedented to get that two and a half override in this town. So it's, I mean, we're going to have to try to start changing mindsets and see what we can all do differently. Not saying, as I said, that freeze would work, but you know, each side can kind of look at what to do. The redistricting against, I think we should at least give a year to parents to kind of get their kids prepared before they would redistrict. And my big thing on the closing school aspects or closing elementary schools, I should say, closing schools and consolidating could be a good thing. I don't know. I mean, I'd love to hear people's opinions on that and what they think, but I do know our town for decades now has had a lot of, like, elementary schools spread out over town that feeds into two middle schools as they get older and then when they get older, they all get to join the high school. So, you know, messing with that foundation, I don't think we should rush into a situation like that. But as I said, I am here to listen. I have no agenda on this stuff. I would like to see, the one question is, if we voted for no for 79, but we voted for 83, I just would like to know how that's not just kicking the can down the road to the town council when we can be working to try to still figure out an 83 on it. But yeah, I'll listen to everyone tonight, looking forward to it. This is definitely the biggest school committee meeting I've been to. When you have this public participation in stuff like this, more happens, but when you wait to the last minute, I think we all struggle as a town. So, thank you.
Dr. Horak? Does she want to make a statement?
Hi. Thanks for allowing me the opportunity to speak. Tonight, we've seen some changes to the budget scenarios that are different than what we've seen last week. And at this time, given that they're brand new, we haven't had time to thoroughly look through the changes that have been just proposed on us tonight. And we haven't had a time to take a deep dive into these budget changes, discuss them with the community. Like Matt Lynch said, I think that it's really important to have those conversations with those of us around us and the community that we represent. And we haven't had the opportunity to do that in a deep dive fashion because of these new changes presented tonight. I also have significant problem with a lot of these alternatives, 71 point, 71 point, 79.1 million dollar budget scenario with the reductions taken. They make me sick to my stomach, quite honestly. I'm sitting here and I'm very sick to my stomach. All of these cuts are draconian and our school system can't take it and we're not going to be able to achieve our outcomes and we're not going to be able to achieve our mission with these reductions, especially, I highlight the one in the middle, super internal superintendent search. Strongly feel that we need that money for an upcoming superintendent search so that we can find the best candidate for this position. In addition, I want to briefly talk about how underfunded our schools have been for the past few years. From the standpoint of me, some of you know that I'm the PTO president, co-president, I'm sorry, of Flaherty Elementary School. And for years, there hasn't been any fat to cut in the school system. Our schools haven't been funded to then fulfill the students' needs for at least the last three years that I've been paying attention to the school committee and now since I've been on. I'll give you an example. At the Flaherty PTO, we routinely fill the gap in underfunding our school system. I crunch the numbers of how much money we spend in our PTO in order to fulfill teacher special requests for routine printers, books, phonics materials, rugs, pencil sharpeners, all these things that the school district is not able to provide for, for our teachers. 38% of our PTO budget goes to routine teacher expenses to fulfill the needs to help our students' education that the district is not able to provide. So this is some data that suggests that our school system is not providing the budget services and the services needed to help our teachers provide the best education that we need to for our students. So at this time, I think that we need more time to consider these draconian cuts before we take a budget vote. Thank you.
Anybody else from the committee? Anything else? Ms. LaFogarty?
Thank you. I have a couple of questions also, just a couple of brief comments. One of my questions is, as far as the staff reductions that you would see under the 79 million dollar budget, would some of those be vacancies and would that be a significant amount of them?
Where possible, where possible, you would take the reductions through attrition, yes.
And as far as determining what staff positions would be reduced under that budget, what type of, I guess, how is that determined? Is it trying to see the least impact on learning? Is that, I would assume that would be the starting point?
Always. So we would be working with principals at every single level to make sure that the cuts were, one, spread out appropriately, if you think about the elementary level. But looking at the numbers that I presented this evening, you can get a flavor for what those class sizes would look like at the elementary. You also get a sense of what would be put back that we were proposing to take out in terms of math specialist. At the middle and the high school level, so many things are driven by the scheduling process. So we work directly with the principals to make sure all the programs are intact that I've mentioned, while making sure that the resources are allocated as well as it can be done.
Just a couple of comments. One thing I, I think is an improvement over this week's proposals over the last week is I like how it's sort of maintaining the status quo a little bit in terms of where students are going to school and not rushing into like drastic changes that would affect, impact where students are going. So I think that is a step in the right direction. But I think originally that we, we had, as we, as you discussed earlier in the presentation, 83.5, I think, was the maintenance of effort budget. I think everyone would agree that if we had, if we could provide that maintenance of effort budget, that would be ideal. There clearly are real, you know, financial problems affecting the town. There's a lack of, apparently a lack of available funds to meet that budget. And so realistically, it seems that there's likely going to be, you know, that some reduction service is going to take place. But then the question for me in deciding on the 79.1 million dollar budget is, well, you know, we want to get as close to 83.5 as we can. Is 79.1 the best we can do? And, you know, I'm not sure I'm there where I can say, yes, that's, that's the best we can do. That consideration, you know, has to do with what, how much money the town can get through an override, what type of override can pass. And I'm not sure I, I feel that this is the best forum to kind of make that sort of final determination as to what's the best we can do, because it really has a lot to do with the finances on the town side, looking at what other departments need. I mean, there's a, just talk about, well, an 18 million override would be a large number, but the school, we're just talking about the school's deficit, which is not 18 million. So in some sense, you know, voting down the 79.5, you could look at it as kicking the can down the road and maybe in a way it is, but I don't know that in terms of me making a decision that that's the best we can do, that's the best number. I'm not sure I'm there. When I listen to what everybody else to say, of course, I'm just kind of expressing my thoughts on it.
Thank you, Ms. LaFogarty. I'll open it up to the student reps at this point. Who wants to go first?
Thank you, Dr. Lee, for this proposal. I know that it certainly can't be easy to develop this plan, so I appreciate the effort that has gone into this. Given concerns surrounding accreditation at previous meetings, would this new proposed budget put us at risk for accreditation loss? And if an override doesn't pass, would we then be at risk for losing accreditation as well?
The reductions at the high school level would be viewed by Niasq as something of concern. It would be a process. You don't overnight lose accreditation, but some of the initial proposed reductions at a level-funded status would conceivably have an impact on their thought process related to accreditation. You know, the 79.1 puts us in a better position, but anytime they see school systems cutting staff and reducing opportunities, they would want to have a conversation with that particular school.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to raise that concern because various members of the community have communicated it to me and I just wanted to clarify, I guess, some information on that for people who might not know that the, cutting the media, reducing the guidance department personnel and severely reducing physical resources and student support as well as course offerings and electives, especially in the arts, would leave us vulnerable to sections 4.2 and 4.4 of the 2023 standards. Would that be correct? In the early 90s, one director of professional development at the Massachusetts Teacher Association, Fred Andelman, stated that if a school's accreditation is withdrawn, the likelihood of its graduates being able to go on to some kind of recognized post-secondary education is severely jeopardized. This would mean that college applications of students who have worked diligently over years throughout their education will not be looked at with the attention they deserve, putting them at risk from being denied from colleges and universities, and they may be required to take remedial courses to make sure they are on track, which would be another financial burden for families already facing financial burdens in everyday life. Students of these schools may also be found ineligible for scholarships when preparing for college, may not have access to adequate financial aid in pursuing higher education, and may not have their credits or diploma recognized from an unaccredited high school. Even students who decide to pursue employment right out of high school will be poorly received by potential employers. And when you risk accreditation, you also risk losing out on state and federal funding. Not only would this impact students and teachers, but it could go beyond the classroom. And as we've heard through public comment in past weeks, a myriad of parents have named the school system as the main reason they moved into our community. Losing a community school like this would damage our housing market, resulting in people moving out and discouraging people from moving here and would also result in a loss of residential tax revenue. residential tax revenue. A 2007 paper by Dennison et al. at the Universities of Connecticut and Minnesota found a connection between a district's performance on state assessments and its bond credit rating, and the study's authors take performance on standardized tests as a proxy for the quality of school leadership, and the findings suggest these districts that lose accreditation also find it more difficult to borrow for school improvements. What would this mean for the projects and renovations at Braintree High School as well as other municipal projects? Although it is not common to lose accreditation, the risks and concerns brought to my attention as well as the other student representatives here on the panel have been something I feel obligated to address given the severity of the risk that this could pose for the future of not only Braintree students and teachers, but the community as a whole and how we would be able to get out of that if ever. So thank you for your attention, but I just wanted to make that known.
Madison?
I'd like to thank our teachers for that young lady's call.
Madison, did you want to make statements?
Thank you, Sam. Thank you, Sam, for that. I also believe that's an incredibly important topic to touch upon, so thank you for bringing that to everyone's attention tonight. And thank you to Mr. Lee for these proposed budget plans. I know it's not easy, but, you know, the fact that we're all able to come here and to listen tonight is, you know, a testament to how much we all care about this community. So as a senior at BHS, have had the opportunity to be heavily involved in the AP curriculums offered at the high school, and I just want to speak about some of the more specific risks that we face if we begin reducing the offering of these courses, specifically as it pertains to the BPS mission statement. If any AP courses are eliminated at BHS, the AP courses themselves or the exams will not just go away. They're national exams, they're national curriculums, they exist wherever you are. But now we are making the resources necessary to perform well on them accessible to those who can afford them, which is not in support of the goal of equitability that BPS holds to a high standard. AP exams cost around a hundred dollars, typically ninety-eight dollars for most exams before any sort of waived fee for low-income students are allowed, which do allow exams to be taken for as low as nine dollars, which is obviously great and something we love to see. But what good is all of this if students do not have the ability to perform well on them and really gain the skills that these courses are designed to cultivate? Students have to reach outside of BPS to access locations to take these exams and find their own study resources. This can mean buying study books for about twenty to thirty dollars per book, but when I say this, these are typically reviews of material with practice exams. It's not comparable to an entire year of in-class experience that involves valuable discussions, timed exams, and especially teacher feedback, which would essentially become unavailable if a student is self-studying unless, again, it is paid for separately via an outside tutor. A fair amount of success on AP exams is not necessarily accredited to how much material you know, which is, of course, important, but how to be able to think through questions you're not a hundred percent confident on and how to think through parts of the exam that are designed for higher-level thinking. Preparation like this is almost solely done with the teacher and with peers, something that would be completely lost if the courses are not offered in the school. Ultimately, these classes are designed to prepare students for college-level courses, whether or not the college takes the credits earned from the AP score or whether or not the student performs well on the exam at all. Students learn the time management skills and workload management that are needed for college and eventually to be contributing members of a diverse and global society, which is a statement explicitly taken from the BPS mission statement. Then there is the concern of college admissions process. Eighty-five percent of selective colleges and universities report that a student's AP experience favorably impacts admissions decisions, which is taken from the College Board website. And yes, while many of these colleges universities will say that they take into consideration that your high school does not offer these certain courses and they will not hold you accountable for that, and I do believe this may be true in some instances, will these students be able to hold their own when they're accepted? Will they be able to hold their own with the students who have been involved in these higher-level courses for three to four years? My guess would be no. And I think, and I have heard from many of my fellow peers and teachers, that the proposed budget does not support the mission statement that is our obligation to fulfill to the utmost extent year after year. This statement is designed to allow our education systems to have the room to improve. In fact, it expects us to be always looking to improve for our students, and I do fear that we are going in the wrong direction and direction that I believe would be extremely difficult to ever come back from. That's all.
Okay. Hi, everyone. You all look so good in your pink tonight, I just have to say that. I'm going to be talking about mental health and what this, what this budget will do have us on, will have an impact on students. I decided to pull out some logos because as my teacher, Ms. Murphy, taught me, every good argument has some logical base facts. COVID created a mental health crisis. We all know this. In fact, the Centers of Disease Control and Prevention, CDC, reported in 2023 that more than thirty-seven percent of high school students reported that they experienced poor mental health during the pandemic, and forty-four percent said they persistently felt sad or hopeless throughout the year. Now, in November 2023, Mental Health of America reported that 2.7 million children and adolescents are struggling with severe depression. Now, we cannot say that COVID is creating more mental health problems. With this budget, this town will be creating more mental health problems. So in case you didn't know, here's what we're going to do that's going to hurt mental health. Reduce a guidance physician in high school. Point six and east, and more kids will have to go to fewer guidance counselors. We're going to have larger class sizes, which is around thirty students. This will increase anxiety, especially for asking questions in the high school level. We would have less time to talk to guidance because increasing number of students would further increase shorter amounts of times of meeting with guidance counselors, which increases anxiety and depression. When your mental health is bad, what happens? You perform worse on tests and receive lower grades, hurting your GPA, which hurts your chances at further education after high school, and for the younger kids. Dr. Rosemary Allen, a psychologist, explains in numerous TED Talks how a part of some children's outburst leads to when they did not receive positive reinforcements in large class sizes. This will happen in the elementary schools. For example, a child could be following the rules and instruction that their teacher gives, for example, sitting crisscross applesauce on the carpet. Most teachers would give positive reinforcement to the child because they see them, they hear them. They're in a class size with around fifteen students. But with a class size of around thirty students, they will not see them because this is, that's not their fault. This is the class size's fault. When the child is not seen and is not positively reinforced, that can cause them to act out and be punished by the already stressed teacher. This will lead to overstimulation from the child, which can result in negative reinforcement and punishment, so they will actually not be able to learn since they will be punished. This is proven to happen. It is not the teacher's nor the child's fault. It is the larger class size's fault. Today, during my research before coming here, I decided to take a trip on Braintree Public Schools' website. Written on the cover page is the three objectives, one being social, emotional learning, and wellness. Then I decided to go to the three-year plan we published in September. On objective three point one, it says, "Provide professional development and resources to support students who experience personal, social, and/or emotional challenges that prevent academic and overall success." We won't be doing that anymore. Less extracurriculars equals less socialization, something we all need after COVID. Less guidance counselors equals less emotional learning and wellness, so clearly we're going to have to change that objective. I am going to say what needs to be said. What we need is an eighteen million dollar override. We do not need an eight million dollar over budget. We do not want the reduced budget. We want our teachers to be saved. We want everyone in this community and public school system to be saved. There are a lot of people here who say that an override is a small fix to a larger problem for the future. Key word, "the future." Where are we right now? We are in today, this year. We aren't in the past either, and right now, today in this moment, we need an override. Before I leave you, I want to leave the school committee and Mayor Joyce with this quote from Dr. Jane Goodall. "What you do makes a difference, and you have to decide what kind of difference you want to make." Thank you.
Hello. First off, I want to thank my fellow school committee members and student representatives for providing all these logistical facts and being there. They've been one of my greatest support team throughout this whole time in presenting their arguments, so I want to give them credit. I want to thank everyone for being here tonight. I want to talk a little bit about the emotional aspect of our current situation. You heard a lot of the statistics, and we're kind of in a situation right now where it's brought in all of emotional turmoil to our school system. And an incident I had today in school reminded me once again of the role of our teachers' play in our everyday lives. Just this morning, I was overwhelmed with a bunch of stress and struggles, and so I came into school kind of upset, kind of crying, and I walked into my first period class with tears as my teacher held me and she said, "Can I give you a hug?" She proceeded to tell me calmly, "Whatever you're going through, I'm here with you right now." Despite this teacher receiving a pink slip today, she came for me when I was at one of my lowest points in life. So just twelve hours ago, when I needed a shoulder to cry on and a voice to hear me out, our school staff came to support me despite the stress and atmosphere in our building right now. If we let these teachers go, who is going to support our students? As mentioned by Bella, the mental health crisis is at an all-time high, and without a strong staff and support system, we are hindering the ability of our students to learn. Emotional support comes first, and yet it is rarely talked about, and it is our teachers that provide the support for students each and every day despite the struggles they are going on through in their own personal lives. In addition to that comes the topic of college, as Maddie mentioned, and education beyond our school system. Our staff and guidance department are the main support systems for students who want to pursue an education beyond school. I want to share my example once again. Today, I'm the first member of my family attending college in America, and it is solely the Braintree Public School system that has helped me get through this college application process. From the emotional support of any teacher to being able to go to my guidance counselor with the answer to any question, we need our staff, we want our students to go to college and succeed beyond the school system. We are in a crisis situation right now, and as we all know, an override is our only way out. This town runs on the idea of community building and supporting each other as seen every single day at our schools. Just take a look around this room tonight. As you will hear from the students who will speak after me, we refuse to sit here and stay silent as our school and staff community needs us. I want to end today with a quote that I'm sure all of you have heard. As Helen Keller once said, "Alone, we can do so little, and together, we can do so much." So tonight, I urge you once again to stand together and pass an override because as seen by the wave of pink in this room, we are not giving up.
Are there any, are there any other comments from the school committee? No? All right. I just have a statement I'd like to make as well. And this is my mindset at the moment, and I want to listen to everybody tonight, but this is where I'm thinking right now. So I know discussion on the FY25 school budget has been upsetting and emotional for so many over the past several weeks. The superintendent has put these presentations together diligently and thoughtfully. I'd like to thank him and his administrative team for their work through this extremely difficult budget season. We have been trying to preserve people and programs wherever possible. Our teachers and staff are the backbone of the Braintree Public School system. The high-quality BPS experience is entirely built off the foundation that they lay. I note tonight, many people will be asking for the eighty-three million dollar budget and a sixteen to eighteen million dollar override with zero cuts and no fee increases. I simply do not believe that that is realistic with the current financial state of the town. This will be the most difficult vote that I have ever taken as a school committee member. As the mayor stated, you will be moving forward with an override. How can we ask residents to pay more in taxes without taking a deep dive into the town budget and making some difficult cost reductions across departments? And make, and also make a plan for the future for the next few years. An override also has to be supportable to ensure that it passes. My worst fear is that an override fails and we face a level-funded budget at seventy-five point five, doubling these reductions. That will be devastating. We will not be able to recognize the Braintree Public Schools. With that, I will open it up to public comment. So I'm going to call people up one by one. I have sign-up sheets. If people haven't signed up, there's a sign-up sheet on the podium. But I'll call you up, and I apologize ahead of time if I mispronounced your name. And I would respectfully ask people to keep the comments to two minutes. We have a room full of people. It's going to be quite a, quite a late evening, so if you could, I would ask you to please try to keep them to a couple of minutes. Julianne Quintiliani.
Good evening. My name is Julianne Quintiliani. I live at eighty-six Amherst Road. I speak tonight as a Braintree employee, homeowner, a graduate of Braintree High, classified citizen, and a lifelong resident. The current financial situation the town faces is dire. The tensions are real. To park many townwide services, employees, our schools, its students, and a focus tonight to teachers and members who serve our children. No amount of thinking will solve the problems we face or erase the urgency of this matter for a very difficult decision that lie ahead that impact lives and livelihoods. No amount of goodwill of the people can make this problem go away. The numbers don't lie. I would like to start by thanking Superintendent Lee for his leadership over the past several years, especially in the most recent months. He has the unfortunate responsibilities of recommending unfavorable solutions to this very real problem. He has actively engaged the community in difficult and emotionally charged conversations and is trying to take timely actions that allow many to understand their fate in what is the ultimate result of school layoffs. Teachers deserve to know where they stand. Although we would like to all understand how these financial challenges of such magnitude came about, Braintree has to look hard at who we are and who we want to be as a town. There is financial uncertainty in our future, whether through a widespread economic downturn or even more locally with the uncertain fate of the South Shore Mall. We need to work together and come up with a strategic direction and long-term plan to increase revenues to support the level of services that our community has come to expect and what we deserve. I urge this town leadership, school committee, and the residents of Braintree to reflect honestly and in good faith to do what's best for not only the teachers of Braintree, but especially the students. What we need is a decisive leadership, communication, the ability to make tough decisions while being able to withstand unavoidable community backlash. I want to personally thank Superintendent Lee for his unwavering professionalism and leadership during these incredible, difficult times. I urge the school committee tonight to do what's best for Braintree, putting political and personal interests aside while prioritizing our students first. Thank you.
Jessica Fararo. Again, apologize if I pronounced it wrong.
Hello. Today, we were fortunate enough to witness a rare celestial event, the eclipse of the Earth, the Moon, and the Sun. This is a humbling reminder that if three solar bodies can align, so can the citizens of Braintree and elected officials, citizens of Braintree and elected officials of Braintree, Massachusetts. That is why I'm here to advocate for, actually fight for, the opportunity to vote on a robust override and fully-funded town budget. It's past time our community found common ground on immediate and long-term solutions to our financial crisis. It's past time we welcomed new sources of revenue and sustainable tax reform. It's past time we funded the institutions that make Braintree great, but it's the perfect time, the imminent time, for consensus and bold action. Mayor Joyce and members of the school committee, I would move heaven and earth to provide my boys with an outstanding education, but my goal today is to move you and anyone else who cannot see the critical need for a tax override. Override is not a dirty word. It's a lifeline. It's an antidote to the senseless exodus we will witness if one hundred-plus educators bring their talent, passion, and promise to our neighbors while we duct tape our school system together with cheap and ineffective fixes. Our children deserve enrichment. They deserve engagement in resourced education, not crowded classrooms, useless study halls, and reduced curriculums. A robust override immediately supported
That is why I'm here to advocate for, actually fight for, the opportunity to vote on a robust override and fully funded town budget. It's past time our community found common ground on immediate and long-term solutions to our financial crisis. It's past time we welcomed new sources of revenue and sustainable tax reform. It's past time we funded the institutions that make Braintree great. But it's the perfect time, the imminent time, for consensus and bold action. Mayor Joyce and members of the school committee, I would move heaven and earth to provide my boys with an outstanding education. But my goal today is to move you and anyone else who cannot see the critical need for a tax override. Override is not a dirty word. It's a lifeline. It's an antidote to the senseless exodus we will witness if 100-plus educators bring their talent, passion, and promise to our neighbors while we duct tape our school system together with cheap and ineffective fixes. Our children deserve enrichment. They deserve engagement in resourced education, not crowded classrooms, useless study halls, and reduced curriculums. A robust override immediately supported and endorsed by our town leaders is a temporary but essential step towards fiscal recovery. A fully funded municipal budget will steady Braintree's chaotic financial course and give you, our elected officials, a year to assess inefficiencies, explore revenue sources, and build back this community's trust in government. A comprehensive override is also an act of accountability. It is an affirmation of the Braintree institutions that are essential to our well-being. It's an acknowledgement that in Braintree, we pay our debts and we fund our expenses. And most importantly, in override, this override is an investment in our children and our future. Mayor Joyce, you are fresh off the election campaign trail as are several members of the school committee. For months, we saw lawn signs, we listened to speeches, we read flyers, and we assessed talent. When you spoke to our school, I appreciated your opinions on mental health and expanded curriculum, and I look forward to your comprehensive plan for our schools. And you are here now, sitting in front of us, because a majority of the voters like your ideas. But today, we need more than just good ideas. Today, we need you to be our champion and earn our community's trust and campaign for this override. We need your office to publish clear presentations accounting for every penny of the override funding and to promote the override at PTO meetings, residential developments, and alongside us on the sidelines of spring soccer games. We need a funded future where we can realize good ideas. Braintree's value as a town and its reputation as a municipality depends on your ability to align all stakeholders and campaign for a fully funded budget. It's time our children's needs and our town's future eclipsed politics and patchwork remedies. If there's anything we can take away from a day dominated by natural phenomena is that the world is bigger than us. And if we put aside self-interest and sink our efforts to fully fund this town, the impact will save our schools, our students, our teachers, and our sense of pride in Braintree. Thank you.
Julia, excuse me, Julia Hafferty.
Hi, everyone. My name is Julia Hafferty. I'm a senior at Braintree High School and I will be attending Mass Art in the Fall, which is a statement I would not be able to make if it were not for the arts at Braintree Public Schools. I spend the majority of my day in my art teacher's classroom because she lets me come in during all of my study halls, all of my lunch blocks, and she understands that there is no place in the school where I feel more comfortable being myself or expressing myself or feel The arts are a foundational part of students' lives at BHS that should not go unnoticed. Every student whose only break from stress in the day is their art class, every kid who finally learned an instrument that they never thought that they could play, every time someone comes in to borrow supplies to make a poster for their club, every piece of art hanging in a school, including on your podiums, and most importantly, every kid in Braintree who would not show up to school if it were not for their arts class. I can't imagine where I would be if I had ended, where I would have ended up if I had not had the exposure to the arts that I have had, especially in the past two years since I have met my art teacher, Ms. Young. It's even worse to know the amount of students who are just like me and only a few years younger who will not have art of a resource, who want, who will not be encouraged to pursue their passion and creativity and have no idea that it is possible for them to have a successful career in a design field. Teachers like Ms. Young put in the time and the effort to build personal connections with their students and show them every possible path for their future. I'm in our AP art class, which is filled with entirely seniors, except for one student, and she told every single person in that class to set up a one-on-one meeting with her at the beginning of this school year to discuss our plans for college and our futures. She specified, even if you are not a senior, even if you are not going into an art school, that she wanted to make sure that you had a plan and that you were going to be okay. Her persistence and love for her job exemplifies how essential art programs are. If these cuts go through, it will stunt the creativity of the next generation of kids brought up in Braintree Public Schools. And the loss of the arts in our children's education will be mourned indefinitely. Thank you.
And the next person is Amy Cushing and then Katie Marshall, just so people want to come up or make their way up front. Celia?
Good evening. My name is Celia DePease and I've been living in Braintree since 2014 when I moved during the start of the third grade. I'm currently a senior at Braintree High School and I'm also the president of the BHS Triumph Music Honor Society, as well as the coordinator and founder of our Woodwind Chamber Ensemble and a member of the BHS String Band. As I'm sure you are all very aware, the budget cuts that Braintree High and the middle and elementary schools face pose a great risk to the music and arts program that are currently enriching the lives of hundreds of students of all ages throughout Braintree. Approaching the end of my final year in the Braintree Public School System, I've been reflecting on a lot, particularly my journey with music. From the first time I picked up a flute in my fourth grade music class to now at age 18, through the hard work and care of dedicated music teachers, I grew a love of music and I know so many of my classmates and friends agree. Music, beginning with the Braintree Public Schools music program, has been a constant and positive influence for more than half of my life. With encouragement from teachers at every step of my music education, I've grown the skills and confidence to audition for and be accepted into competitive local festivals as I know many other students have, such as Semesba in southeastern Massachusetts senior districts. I didn't have that kind of confidence before music. I'm drawing on that confidence now to stand in front of you to ask that you do everything within your power to protect music and the arts and our amazing Braintree teachers. Making cuts to our schools is a mistake. Minimizing the arts and music is a mistake. Tonight, students of both the music and arts department have joined together to pass around note cards to those in attendance at this meeting, expressing our individual worries for our programs and how any reductions to the program, to its staff, class offerings, and extracurricular clubs would negatively impact our lives. In just a few days, we've collected enough cards to fill a box. Now, I'd like to read to you some of their concerns. One student wrote, "Music creates a safe space for me in this school. Orchestra, string band, these are the best classes and clubs that are always something to look forward to in a stressful, busy day. BHS wouldn't be the same without its music department." Another wrote, "The music program in Braintree has inspired me to become a music teacher for my career. Teachers like Mr. Sawtelle are important to me personally and losing the music program is not something we can allow to happen." Another, "The arts are a way for a lot of students to escape from any issues that may happen in their lives. Without the arts in Braintree Public Schools, students' mental health will go down and as a result, student academic performance will plummet." Another student mentioned all of the annual concerts and festivals we host, stating, "If I lost music, I would lose my connection to the community of Braintree." I'll read that again to let it sink in. "If I lost music, I would lose my connection to the community of Braintree." A particularly striking comment read, "Music has gotten me through my darkest of times. There'd be days I didn't feel like living, but my music class kept me going. The expression of myself through my art was a catharsis that saved me time and time again. Without the music department, I would have never had that outlet and I wouldn't be here today." What I found heartbreaking was that comments like this last one were not few in numbers. An overwhelming portion of students who wrote letters spoke of their mental health issues, including depression and anxiety, and attributed their improvements to our arts and music departments. Limiting our electives and possibilities will undoubtedly diminish the only outlet many of us have. I do not want to think of the upcoming year where struggling students may be torn from their passions. Speaking on behalf of the music and arts students in the Braintree Public School System, I think our sentiments can be summarized in one student's comment. It breaks my heart to think that hundreds of kids just like me soon might not have the same opportunity at BHS. As a graduating senior, I hope that Braintree provides the same environment for younger students as it did for me. Braintree is dependent on our incredible schools for its reputation. Take away these culture-building departments and you take away our town's essence. I'd like to end with a few closing remarks from final students. Please help us. Don't take away my light. Don't make this mistake. I thank you for listening to me tonight and I sincerely hope that you rethink minimizing or demolishing what we, the students of arts and music, have found to be the most important and rewarding aspects of the town of Braintree. Thank you.
I'm Katie Marshall. I admit that until an email on March 15th from my son's absolutely incredible kindergarten teacher, I did not know what was going on. I, like many of us, felt blindsided by the scale of this crisis that our town is in and I appreciate your transparency, Mayor Joyce. I've lived here for 10 years and I'm embarrassed to say that it took this crisis for me to learn who my school committee members are, who my town councilors are, and to give myself a crash course in the municipal processes. And I'm sure that there are many folks who have been paying attention for a long time and saw this coming. But I also do not understand why the moment that the extent of this deficit was shared by Mayor Joyce to the town council, there was not simply a flyer in everyone's mailbox stating that the town budget process is underway, this is the deficit, and here is a listing of all the public meetings. Why can't the town-wide emails and texts that we opt into be utilized to help residents be more aware of this process? We all know that these proposed cuts, pretty much any version of them, will completely gut our school system and the basic services in this town. We are in jeopardy of losing so many educators, even beyond those who received their pink slips, because we are stripping their supports and offering them only further burdens and further overwhelm. As many have said, we are asking for more from town leadership. I know the money isn't there and it'll take time to generate new streams of revenue, but we need to exhaust all of our options and residents need more information. We need to know there's been a full analysis and a third-party validation. We need to know what the path forward looks like. This is a wake-up call. It's been nearly 20 years since the last override failed. Well, things have changed. We've been galvanized. We know this will affect more than the schools and we are getting the word out, going door to door. If anyone wants to join forces, let's do it. There are more folks more involved than ever before, all with varied backgrounds and expertise, and we're all learning from each other and working together. And so, like at the last meeting, I will end with a quote from Captain Jean-Luc Picard, "Things are only impossible until they are not."
Amy Cushing. I grew up in Braintree, property owner, teacher at Braintree High School. I speak to you today on behalf of my family and the many hard-working individuals in our town who are facing the devastating impact of the proposed budget cuts. As a teacher at the high school, I have witnessed firsthand the toll these cuts have taken on our education system with 100 teachers receiving pink slips and the quality of education for our students hanging in the balance. However, the impact of these cuts goes far beyond the classroom. My brother Dan, a dedicated Braintree firefighter, even if his job is spared, faces the prospect of working in unsafe conditions if the department is not adequately funded. The safety of our community is paramount and should never be compromised due to budget constraints. Similarly, my eldest brother Billy, a Braintree Police K-9 officer, has already sacrificed so much for our town. He himself was critically injured and his police K-9 partner killed in the line of duty. His life-altering injuries from the incident have left him permanently disabled. This Tuesday, April 9th, will be two years since my father passed away after courageously battling cancer. He was a lifelong resident of Braintree, decorated Vietnam veteran, and a proud Braintree Police Officer for over 35 years. It should come as no surprise that he raised his children with a deep sense of civic duty that all of us take on proudly today. My family's commitment to our town goes on. My mother Pamela, a dedicated secretary at BHS, and my sister Lee, a paraprofessional at Highlands School. I also have two other brothers who work for the DPW. The proposed budget cuts would affect my family, as well as so many others across this entire town. This is not just small-town talk. It is a serious issue with far-reaching consequences that will have a significant impact on our community. I mention my family because it is clear that these budget cuts are not just about numbers on a spreadsheet. They have real and devastating consequences for the hard-working individuals who keep our town safe, educated, and functioning. I urge you to reconsider and take immediate action to ensure the well-being and the livelihoods, the livelihoods of my family and of all of those who serve and work and live in our community. Our town deserves better and it is up to you to make the right decision for the future of our community. Thank you.
All right. The next three names are Joe McRitchie, Meg Morton, and Dr. Peter Kersberg. So Joe.
My name is Joe McRitchie. I live at 109 Standish Ave. I currently have a fifth-grade son at South and a third-grade son at Highlands. I'm also a middle school teacher, not in Braintree, but I teach in a 60-year-old building that's 63% low-income, so I regularly see the effects of larger class sizes, budget constraints, layoffs, and deteriorating infrastructure. Like many of the people here tonight, deciding to live in Braintree was our top choice above all other towns. And one of the main reasons before even having children was because of the schools. I believe that goes for each of you who live in Braintree as well. I don't think you'd hold elected office if you didn't care for the place where you live. I also doubt that each of you ran for office with the intention of closing schools, laying off teachers, decreasing property value, and disinvesting in our children. Over the past few weeks, I know many of you have heard the parents, students, taxpayers, and voters tell you what the schools mean to their community. My goal tonight is not to tie myself emotionally to the community, but rather to address some facts facing our schools. As former Braintree resident and public education advocate John Adams famously said, "Facts are stubborn things." A lesser-known Adams quote are his views on public education. He said, "The whole people must take upon ourselves the education of the whole people and must be willing to bear the expenses of it. There should not be a district of one square mile without a school in it, not founded by a charitable individual, but maintained at the expense of the people themselves." Mr. Lee addressed the Highlands community last Wednesday, letting us know that many of our children would still remain walkers wherever they end up in school next year or the year after. So at a later date, we will need to hear if our six, seven, and eight-year-olds are better off walking along Route 37 or through the town forest. The current plan of staff reduction and school closures would change our student-to-teacher ratio from 13 to 17 to 1. Some elementary classes would go to 24, which teachers rarely know could end up at 26 or 27 once scheduling is completed and squeaky-wheel parents like myself are accommodated. The plan to close Highlands or any school and create larger elementary schools, whether at the Old South or consolidating the current six elementary schools to five, would create an elementary school with around 600 students. According to Public School Review, similar-sized schools exist in Fall River, Springfield, New Bedford, Lynn, and Fitchburg. And according to that same site, each of these rank in the bottom 50% of Massachusetts proficiency, with between 6 and 18% proficient in math and 15 and 34% proficient in reading. Each of these schools are rated a 1, 2, or 3 out of 10 in public school rating, but would each still maintain better student-to-teacher ratios than that's what's being proposed in Braintree. The recent budget proposals noted that closing schools would negatively impact the town's relationship with the mass school building authority. This has been drastically underemphasized. The mismanagement of the school's budget is sending us in the wrong direction and the state would be foolish to provide Braintree with anything once they consider how administration elected officials are devaluing education, especially after the realization that the state has already contributed to new roofs and HVAC systems and closing buildings and new windows in a school that has since been replaced. Over the last six years, Braintree has applied for renovations of Braintree High through the MSBA by submitting statements of interest in each year from 2018 to 2023. Statements of interest this year were due on March 1st. If Braintree submitted one this year, which I'm hoping Mr. Lee did, it would now need to be amended to include 100 layoffs. We can now add possible school closures and increased class sizes to this application. Any hope we might have in gaining state aid for a new high school can be buried in the pile of dirt that currently sits in the Braintree High's parking lot. Rather than being awarded grants to help pay for new school, we will be paying penalties for closing buildings the state helped pay for. Regardless of a new high school or closing schools, the most important aspect of our schools are the people in it. The teachers who provide for our kids every day and the kids who want to continue their growth in the town that we all have chosen for our families. We know you didn't take on this responsibility to lay off teachers, close schools, and negatively affect Braintree students. There's still time to make this right. This is our future. I will continue to be, it will continue to be our focus. We need it to also be yours. Thank you.
Thank you for allowing me to speak, but first, I would like to commend all of the people who've had the courage to come up here and speak before you.
relationship with the Mass School Building Authority. This has been drastically underemphasized. The mismanagement of the school's budget is sending us in the wrong direction, and the state would be foolish to provide Braintree with anything once they consider how administration elected officials are devaluing education, especially after the realization that the state has already contributed to new roofs and HVAC systems and closing buildings and new windows in a school that has since been replaced. Over the last six years, Braintree has applied for renovations of Braintree High through the MSBA by submitting statements of interest in each year from 2018 to 2023. Statements of interest this year were due on March 1st. If Braintree submitted one this year, which I'm hoping Mr. Lee did, it would now need to be amended to include 100 layoffs. We can now add possible school closures and increased class sizes to this application. Any hope we might have in gaining state aid for a new high school can be buried in the pile of dirt that currently sits in the Braintree High's parking lot. Rather than being awarded grants to help pay for new school, we will be paying penalties for closing buildings the state helped pay for. Regardless of a new high school or closing schools, the most important aspect of our schools are the people in it. The teachers who provide for our kids every day and the kids who want to continue their growth in the town that we all have chosen for our families. We know you didn't take on this responsibility to lay off teachers, close schools, and negatively affect Braintree students. There's still time to make this right. This is our future. It will continue to be our focus. We need it to also be yours. Thank you.
Thank you for allowing me to speak. But first, I would like to commend all of the people who've had the courage to come up here and speak before you, especially the four young ladies right across from me so eloquently. They put a face on what it means to them. I will be very brief. I am a resident and a former employee of the Braintree Public Schools. There's a quote about history. If you don't learn for it, you have to relive it. In 1997, aged in history, Dr. Kersberg remembers, "There were cuts. I was called out of lunch the Monday after April vacation and told that my job was eliminated. I decided to finish my career in another school system. I retired. Braintree is still my number one. I am now a volunteer in South Middle School. Two beautiful facilities, only half-staffed. When I left Braintree, there were six librarians. I came back, there were three. Then there were two. And if this budget goes through, there will be none." I know you don't have a lot of time to listen. I will be very brief. The Mass Board of Library Commissioners' top five reasons for having a licensed school library teacher are: Years of research have shown that good school libraries, ones with licensed school teachers, lead to greater student achievement. Attempts to restrict access to books and book challenges are happening in record numbers in Massachusetts. Research skills and the ability to identify misinformation online are critical in today's world. Licensed school library teachers teach research skills, critical thinking, and the importance of looking for the context of information. In Massachusetts, students in schools that have licensed school library teachers have more access to educational and cultural resources. And I should also mention certification. I also want to commend Ms. Tuffey for mentioning the media program and artificial intelligence. Artificial intelligence is the newest technology, but it won't be the last. Licensed school library teachers teach both staff and students how to use technology. Thank you for your attention.
Good evening. Mayor Joyce, Chair Heger, Superintendent Lee, thanks for the opportunity. I'll be very brief. I didn't expect to see these numbers this evening, so it changes a little bit about what I wanted to say. But first, I appreciate the mayor's position of publicly coming out and supporting an override, which I believe you said this evening. Is it for the $4 million? Half of the reductions, basically?
Right now, we're looking at supporting that override. But we're still working on the numbers, which is why it's important to have this conversation tonight and take into strong consideration what moves forward from this committee.
Okay. Well, I appreciate you coming out and saying that and supporting that. And could you be any more prouder than the student reps that you have on the school committee? So, I'm trying my first attempt at a... And I have now lost it. So, I'll ad lib the rest. I've lived in Braintree with my family for 30 years. I was the superintendent for 22 years, from 19... And I saw two overrides and one debt exclusion fail. The first override was to improve the schools, add coursework, add additional staff, really try and up the schools. That did not pass. The second override was to save the schools. We were drastically underfunded. It was a combination of both state aid and local revenues, and we laid off 65 teachers and 30 support personnel. Our school system took a step backwards 10 years in terms of programs and program development. And so, we started over with that. The end result is that an override by itself is not going to solve the problem. It will require the community to really, one, look at the schools in terms of having made whatever reductions they can without drastically impacting the schools. They have to present a lean budget. And they have to see that there is a long- and short-term plan for the town. And that there is a way forward, that we're not going to run into the same thing. I'm not sure that the problem will be solved in year two, but the community has to see that there's a plan going forward, and they're willing to invest in the plan. And everybody here is a supporter of the schools. Everybody here wants to see an override pass. You have to first see what the numbers are for an override and how much people are willing to pay to increase their taxes for the override. And for everybody that's in here that's in favor of the override, you have at least as many people who you will not hear from, but they will not support it. And so, there's a lot of work. The easiest part is getting the debt exclusion or the override on the ballot. The hard work is getting it passed, and that's where everybody has to come in and work. So, I appreciate the work that the superintendent has done, particularly from last week to this week. I know those numbers don't look good. Nobody wants to see any cuts. Nobody wants to see redistricting. We redistricted twice. We closed an elementary school. I'll tell you that the students adjust very quickly. They show up on day one, the teachers welcome them. They come in, new sneakers, clean faces, all excited about coming to their new school. The parents have the most difficulty adjusting, but the students don't. And it's tough to close a school, but it did have to happen for us. And we had to redistrict at the same time. And it's the staff that make the school. And when your child comes home and says, "I love my teacher," that's all you want as a parent. So, there are some rough roads ahead, and whether it's a partial override, whether it's some reductions have to be made, whether there's some redistricting, if you can get by another year, another year, but, you know, the key is, everybody's got to work together on this and recognize that we just can't have everything we want. It's just not how the world operates, and we don't have unlimited resources, and the residents of the town don't have unlimited resources. I think they have more than they've been willing to spend in the past, which they showed by the debt exclusion for the South, the new South Middle School. So, I've taken up more time, but I just thank you for the opportunity, and I wish everyone the best. I'll do whatever I can to support whatever you come out with. So, thank you.
All right. The next three are Karen Carey, Izzy Longabardi, and Joella Amatia? Sorry, again, if I mispronounced.
Hello. My name is Karen Carey, and I live on Albee Drive. My husband and I grew up in Braintree, attended Braintree Public Schools, and both graduated from Braintree High School. 24 years ago, we purchased our first home in Braintree Highlands. We wanted to give our children the same excellent education and the same sense of pride we had growing up in this town. We have five children who attended Braintree schools over the past 18 years, with their youngest currently in 3rd grade. The foundation of their love for learning and sense of community started with the education they received at Highlands Elementary School. Over the course of the past 18 years, we have had the pleasure of having so many dedicated, wonderful, seasoned, and brand-new teachers come into our lives and make a huge impact on our family. These teachers have enthusiastically instilled a love of learning on our five children that carried with them through the education they received at South Middle School, Braintree High, as well into college for our oldest children. Having so many kids, we have the pleasure of meeting so many wonderful teachers at every school. It breaks my heart to know that many of these teachers that have instilled this love of learning on my children and many others throughout the town may long and longer have jobs in the town of Braintree. Last week, I attended the National Honor Society induction at Braintree High School. It was amazing to hear how many different teachers were role models and mentors to the anductees. From elementary school teachers to middle-school teachers to high school, the impact they had on the success of these children was apparent. Some of the teachers mentioned what once my children had as teachers as well. Some of these amazing teachers may be losing their jobs. These educators, who have dedicated years to this town and have positively made impacts to the betterment of our children, may be let go, just like that. Our children are the greatest assets. We should be doing everything to give them all the tools they need to be promising, educated, and successful adults. The proposals are the bare bones of what we can maybe get by with. The Braintree schools have been underfunded by the town for decades. We spend $3,500 below the state average per student. We have overlooked leaking ceilings, broken boilers, moldy bathrooms, in order to ensure our teachers and children had the necessary resources to be successful. To quote from the Braintree Public Schools website, "The mission of the Braintree schools, in partnership with parents and the community, is to prepare students to become responsible and contributing members of a diverse and global society. We motivate and enable each student to develop intellectually, physically, socially, and emotionally through a rigorous and supportive emotional program with an exclusive and safe environment that nurtures creative and critical thinking, the development of values, and the pursuit of lifelong learning." These budget cuts that have been presented do not support any part of this mission statement. Let's dig into the magnitude of these cuts. There are approximately 412 educators in the town of Braintree. The pink slips that went out today, about 65, make up approximately 15% to 16% of our teaching staff. The additional pink slips are the support staff, whether par educators, admin cafeteria staff, across the schools. The level-funded budget at the elementary school level, these cuts will result in larger class sizes. In 2012, Highlands Elementary School reduced their 4th grade class from four teachers to three. This resulted in 26 children per class with no par professionals. This group of students went from one of the highest-scoring MCAS in the town for 3rd grade to the lowest in both math and ELL in 4th grade. We tried the larger class sizes, and it failed. We know from the past that increasing class sizes with less resources will greatly impact our students. The loss of reading and math specialists across all schools, according to ERIC, the Online Library of Education Research and Information sponsored by the Institute of Education Sciences of the U.S. Department of Education. Early academic skills related to literacy and math are the most significant predictors of future academic achievement. Let's think about that again. Early academic skills related to literacy and math are the most significant predictors of future academic achievement. So let me understand this. We know that when children develop these skills at a young age, they statistically do well in school, yet we are looking to cut these resources. It was stated in one of the slides presented by Superintendent Lee that our special education budget is 35% of the total school budget. These services are required by law, and therefore there isn't any room for cuts. It costs approximately $55 million to fund the Special Education Department in Braintree. We receive approximately $20 million from the state. There might be some additional money there as well. That's a $35 million difference that the town is required to fund. By making cuts to important resources such as math and reading specialists, doesn't it seem like more kids will fall through the cracks and require IEPs, thus increasing this budget mandated by law? Redistricting isn't just redistricting of families. It's also of teachers. Breaking up teams and having teachers teach grade levels that they have never taught based on what their certification is. Elimination of media. Computer skills are essential in the ever-changing digital world, yet we plan to eliminate this. In the middle school, elimination of approximately 21 positions between two middle schools. Larger class sizes. Elimination of world language in 7th grade in such a global economy. Elimination of levels. So this is assuming that all children learn at the same pace. Some kids will be left behind, others will be bored. Elimination of writing and math supports. This goes back to the number of kids requiring additional supports, and IEPs will increase. At Braintree High School, the elimination of 23 positions. Larger class sizes of 25 to 30 students. Reduction of electives, which will result in additional study blocks and less instructional learning. Graduation modifications. I don't even know what that means. Reduction of AP classes. This may inhibit kids getting into certain colleges that they once strived for. And then there is the issue of possibly a losing accreditation. District-wide, reduction of admin support, technology, and security. Possible school closures. We added on to East, and we built a new South due to space constraints at the elementary level. Now we are looking at closing 1 to 2 elementary schools. What is the long-term plan if enrollment increases? Transportation costs for redistricting students. Is there any cost savings there? And then there's the issue of the MSB impact of closing schools. The past few years have been extremely rough for families. Our children have struggled mentally, socially, and academically since COVID. We should be putting our children and their needs first. Cuts of this magnitude will have devastating and lasting effects on our children. A school system is like a window into a town. A town that has a great school system is usually considered a great and desirable town to live in. I fear these cuts will make our town less desirable, reducing our home values. Businesses will leave, therefore the money the town receives from residential and commercial tax will be reduced. It will be a vicious cycle. There needs to be a better answer and solution. We should be exhausting all avenues before cutting staff, reducing support, increasing class sizes, eliminating electives, raising sports and bus fees, and closing schools. It is no secret that Braintree has underfunded their school system for decades. This is not something new. We need long-term and short-term increases of revenue to save our town. We care about our children, our teachers, and our town. Please have faith in our town that we will vote for a Proposition 2.5 override. It's long overdue, and I urge you to please listen to us and put it on the ballot. Mayor Joyce, we realize you inherited this fiscal mess. However, we are looking to you as the mayor and a resident of Braintree to guide us out of this fiscal crisis. We are looking for your experience and expertise to bring in new revenue to our town, to renegotiate the payments we receive from many businesses and organizations that are part of the pilot program, payments in lieu of taxes, such as Bell, Thayer, and Archbishop Williams. If the Municipal Empowerment Act bill is passed, I encourage you to increase tax rate for hotels as well as the mail tax. Currently, the taxes bring in approximately $4 million annual to this town. Members of the school committee, we ask you to please submit both the fully-funded and the modified, again, recently-modified $79 million budgets to the town council for review. Anything less than those two will destroy our schools and our town. In conclusion, I think you have seen over the past few weeks the passion so many have for this town, our schools, our teachers, and our children. Kids have been through a lot. Let's take a breath and not do anything drastic without exhausting all possibilities and resources. Have faith in your community so that we can get through this together. Thank you.
Hi. My name is Isabel Longabardi. I am an 8th grade student at South Middle School, here to speak on behalf of teachers and show my concern for my future education in the Braintree Public Schools. It alarms me that my peers and I are going to be limited to courses that expand the passions and knowledge of a student. I fear that I will not be able to get the accreditation I need for college, and I will be at a disadvantage. This is unfair to all the students, for it chose us that our future is not being prioritized. Not only that, but to limit amazing teachers that care and enjoy teaching the future generations of this town. Since it is necessary to teach students math, science, English, writing, and social studies, we will need all of our awesome teachers that are passionate to teach these subjects. I feel that attention and the educational connection to my teachers help me be more passionate about school and have a better understanding. Because of my current and past teachers, this has been achieved in the classroom. Although these subjects are important, we cannot forget about world language, arts, and music. My sister, a senior in high school, for her first Spanish class in 7th grade, had piqued her interest in languages. Cutting these programs, such as Spanish and French, will limit future students such as her, who has taken this time to... as her, who has taken this time to get into Spanish and French, to explore these options. I myself had found a passion in one of these programs, which is art. To allow students a relieving and creative break in schools does impact them. Disappointment hits younger grades once they hear that extracurriculars have a stronger chance of not being an option. Speaking for younger students, I'd like to say that it is enraging that field trips and experiences such as DC is being taken away. Not only do students find this sad, so do teachers who volunteer to go. My experience in DC caused me to be closer with staff and teachers I have never been able to talk to, such as Ms. Thomas, who I'd like to thank. Not only do I thank her, but I thank my current teachers such as Mr. T., Mr. O'Brien, Ms. Evans, Ms. Asians, Mrs. McKinney's, Mrs. Piliotis, and all my past and current teachers that have taught me so well and did their best to catch my grade up on all of the school we missed during COVID. Looking forward to the education and limited experience that current and future generations will receive causes me to lose faith in the hands that my education lives in.
Hi, uh, my name is Joelle Lamonte, and as my school high school years come to a close, it is without a doubt that my teachers contributed greatly to the foundation of my high school class. Focusing on my own personal experience, it is a miracle that I know what angular rotation is or how to take an antiderivative. From a student's perspective, teaching is a thankless job. Our teachers are not only educators, but they are role models, therapists, social workers, friends, and human beings. They're not just numbers or expenses to cut. There is dimension within education, and Braintree is able to cover this by the diversity of our classes and by the efforts of our teachers. Without my French teachers like Madame Butler and Ms. Heller, I would not be able to communicate with my French-speaking peers and help them fit into the Braintree community. For example, I am a track and field captain, and I was put in this position of power to help a transfer student, who only speaks French, by the way, to feel more connected to the team. Without this education, she would probably just feel alone in this unfamiliar environment. Without science teachers like Ms. Steinle, Mr. Griffin, or Mr. Wood, I would not have been able to develop this drive to question and improve the world around me. Without my English teachers like Ms. Bethka or Ms. Murphy, I would not have the skills like critical thinking or skepticism that allow me to talk to you today. I would not be who I am today without the hard work of the teachers around me. I am but an example of the amalgamation of the restless nights and efforts that Braintree teachers put in constantly. Every teacher has sacrificed something in order for us, the Braintree youth to succeed and grow. To cut teachers from our schools is to destroy Braintree's future, to let future generations deteriorate into nothing. There is potential and hope within these future kids, yet we will not get there by cutting our teachers. To go through with this, like, this, these new proposed solutions is to sentence Braintree into further despair. It is with this image of our future in mind that I implore you all to support a tax override. Yes, it will not solve all of our financial issues immediately, and yes, there will be a lot of work ahead, but it will pave the way for a stable Braintree. It will allow us to begin the process of examining and finding solutions to the buildup that has caused such a budget deficit in the first place. As you weigh your options, I ask you to think about the future of Braintree and the teachers that shape it. Thank you.
The next three names are Abby Jackson, Sarah Forster, Caitlin Potat, sorry, Potat Chino? Chio?
Hi, my name is Abby Jackson. I'm currently a junior at Braintree High School, and I take four AP classes this year. The current budget cuts that we face are set to get rid of many electives, special classes, and AP courses that are currently offered at BHS. We cannot afford to lose these classes, as they are an important part of all students' education. One of the special courses that I taught was called English Seminar. It was offered by previous English director, Mr. Roberts, and current principal, Dr. Scully, and was designed to help students reach their full potential in English. This class and the efforts my teachers put into it allowed me to move into my first AP lang course. These courses have had a tremendous effect on my academic career, allowing me to move up to more advanced classes. I also take AP Music Theory, a course many of you may not have heard of, which is a difficult program not only to learn but to teach. My teacher, Dr. S., has put an effort beyond what my classmates and I can imagine to make the course interesting and fun. Not only this, but all of my teachers, Mr. Din, Ms. Murphy, Mr. Pelletier, and all of my past teachers have put so much effort into making our education fun and interesting and making us grow into the people that we are. They have shaped me into the person I am today, and I am proud to say that. Without these classes and the amazing teachers that teach them, students will not have as many opportunities to learn and grow from. I benefited and grown as a person from these classes, and I want students in my grade and the grades below mine to have the same opportunities I was given. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Sarah Forster, and I live at sixty-five Harrison Avenue, and my daughter is a sophomore at Braintree High School. Now, while I am not happy with any of the proposed cuts and reductions, I will leave that to others' more eloquent voices and try not to contribute to Superintendent Lee's, I'm sure, sleepless nights. But today, what I'm here to talk about is the school committee. I was in the meeting in March when Superintendent Lee first laid out the potential budget cuts, and what I watched was committee members in stunned silence. I listened as committee members asked simple questions about district policies and procedures, which in my opinion, they should have already known. When Superintendent Lee showed the slide about where we stand to other communities, which is not good, again, they seemed surprised, and my question is, why? According to the charter, the Braintree School Committee creates and maintains goals and policies on behalf of the district per goals and standards established by the Massachusetts Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. As I stumbled over this very poorly worded sentence, I began to think that maybe this is the epitome of our school committee, jumbled and run on. While I acknowledge that this is my perception, and maybe I am naive in how the school committee operates, I want to know how they could have been so woefully unprepared for what Superintendent Lee presented. Everybody in this room and in this town knows how underfunded this district is. Where have you been? This is not something that just popped up. This has been going on for years. Where have you been? And for any of those who have been in office longer than four months, where have you been? If the budget, if the budget cuts go on as presented, the school committee will need to work to mitigate the impact on our students. And in all honesty, I'm not certain if that will happen. On that one day that I showed up to listen to Superintendent Lee, I watched a committee member stare at the table and not at the presentation. So I wonder, are you going to support our students? Are you going to support our committee, community, or is this be going to come a blame, a game of blame and inaction? Now, I'm sure to many you may feel that this is a harsh judgment on our school committee. But as town residents, we can no longer tout Braintree's greatness. We can no longer eulogize how Braintree was when people were growing up and when they were raising their children. We can no longer count on greatness as our status quo, because in fact, our status quo is now a financial black hole. And if you ask me, this status quo is not acceptable. So maybe it's time for our town to demand more from its leadership. Not just our school committee, but our town council and any other committee. How have you allowed us to get to this point? I think you can do better, as well as I think you should. So when the next meeting of the Candidates Night rolls around, whenever our next election is, I ask that our incumbent school committee members, and actual any members of Braintree's elected official, to please refrain from rattling off your resume or how much you care, or how much you want to make this town great. None of us need to hear your platitudes. What we need to hear and what we expect to hear is what have you done for the town lately? Thank you.
I'm Caitlin Potat-Liu. I live at one-twenty-five Wildwood Ave. I am a parent of a fourth grader and an incoming kindergartner. Much of what I'm going to say has already been said, but I think it bears repeating. So Mayor Joyce and committee members, the procedure of applying a tourniquet when a limb in an artery has been severed is to provide first responders and medical teams ample time to assess the damage and come up with a plan of proceeding with a treatment and potential losses. It's a short-term solution to hopefully create the best possible outcome in the long-term recovery post-injury. The most important step when applying a tourniquet is applying a timestamp to show when the tourniquet has been applied, because this method of treatment is only meant to be temporary. It provides teams a momentary stopgap to collect their thoughts and come up with a viable solution, rather than rushing to judgment and amputating unnecessary limbs at the detriment to the rest of the body. If applied properly and swiftly, a tourniquet can provide these teams with the space and time to pause just long enough to take a breath and perhaps take a bit more time to consider all the available options. As a community, we are faced with a potential amputation of many valuable assets, and we are hemorrhaging money. Not only are our schools facing one of the most severe budget crises of our generation, but all of our town's budgets are affected by this extraordinary deficit. The loss will be catastrophic, not only to our students and teachers, but to all residents, as the long-term effects will be to our property values and the reputation as one of the most desirable communities on the South Shore. A proposition two-and-a-half override would essentially place a tourniquet on our bleeding budget and allow all town departments and you, our newly-minted mayor, to take a collective breath, assess the damage, and explore all possible outcomes over the next year. Because, as mentioned, this measure is temporary, and Braintree as a community would need to understand that this override is not a long-term solution, but simply a temporary pause to avoid catastrophe. If the override can be positioned as such, it's hopeful, and there is bound to be more buy-in from those that are less affected and might not pay as much attention to these things. And just so that we're also aware, applying a tourniquet doesn't always guarantee that the limb can be saved in the end. Perhaps it does inevitably mean that a school will have to close to allow our community to live within their means. Some teaching positions will still have to get eliminated. Police and fire departments might still have to be downsized. But if we take a beat and we have the time to reevaluate, there could be far less loss. And all of that can be determined after careful consideration and planning, not after panic-induced knee-jerk reaction to a catastrophic realization. Families would have time to plan for these changes. Communications can start earlier to avoid confusion and frustration. New plans can be put in place to allow for seamless transitions and allow our community to remain the thriving place that people long to live. A tax override can do this by stopping the bleeding just long enough to consider all the options and provide our community with the best-case scenario, given these less-than-ideal circumstances. We call on you, Mayor Joyce and the rest of the council, to put forth the override. Place a tourniquet on our bleeding budget and allow our town's departments the time and space to be able to consider a more viable treatment plan for our community. You have an army of citizens behind you, sorry, willing to spread the word. We just need to know when and how. We urge you to act swiftly and stop the bleeding. Don't amputate one limb to save another. An override can be the treatment plan to save the entire body. Thank you.
The next three names are Maria McLaughlin, Michelle Gaffney, and Samantha Sarantakis.
My name is Maria McLaughlin, and I live at eleven Cranmore Road. I grew up in Dorchester and watched my mother struggle to pay for a private education for my sister and I. I knew I wanted to raise my family in a town with an amazing public school system, so I moved to Braintree twelve years ago. I have four kids. Three of them are currently students at Highlands Elementary School. All three of them receive extra supports in the form of math and reading specialists. This weekend, I learned that almost their entire team of teachers faced losing their jobs. Their kindergarten teacher, their first-grade teacher, their math specialist, and their reading specialist. My first grader struggled a lot this past fall. Some days, we physically couldn't get him into the building. The only way we got him in was his amazing teacher, Bridget Donahue. She showed him patience and compassion, and he has been able to thrive because of her. He doesn't want to know a school without her in it. I can't imagine sending our kids to school in the fall, and all of their comfort people are now gone. We try to shield our kids from these cuts we are facing, but it has consumed us. This morning, we went to Highlands to show our teachers support. I had to wipe away my kids' tears as they walked into the building. Imagine being seven years old and already knowing the effects these losses will have on your school life? We refuse to accept these cuts. Mayor Joyce, I urge you to put forth an override to save our teachers and our schools. It's essential for my kids, for your kids, and for all of our kids. Give us a chance and put it on the ballot. Thank you.
I live at thirty Solar Ave. I grew up here in Braintree. I bought a house here in Braintree twenty-five years ago, and I chose to raise my family here in Braintree. I'm also a teacher here in Braintree. I teach second grade at Flaherty Elementary, and this is my twenty-eighth year as a Braintree teacher. I love my job, and I love this town. I've always been beyond proud to live and work in Braintree, but the current situation of our schools and our town is absolutely devastating. Our schools and our whole community are facing the most difficult financial situation in the history of our town. Mayor Joyce and the members of our school committee, you were elected by the citizens of Braintree to take care of our school system and our town. You are now responsible for making some extremely difficult decisions in a very short time. The decisions you make in the coming days and weeks will significantly impact the future of our school system and our whole town. I urge the school committee to approve a budget that will maintain the high quality of education our children deserve, keep our amazing teachers in their classrooms, and ensure that we'll be able to maintain that in the future. I urge you, Mayor Joyce, to act swiftly and present an override vote to the citizens of Braintree that will secure the quality of our schools, police, fire, and all municipalities of our town. It is your responsibility as mayor to ensure that all of our citizens are fully informed on the devastating impacts a level-funded budget will have on Braintree. The people of this community need to understand how voting for or against an override will impact the quality of life in the whole town of Braintree. This isn't just a school system problem, it's a whole-town problem. There are hundreds of people in this room right now, or at least there were earlier, that are ready and willing to work together to ensure that the people of Braintree understand why we must vote in favor of a prop-two-and-a-half override, and who are willing to work tirelessly to do whatever it takes to save our school, our schools and our town. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight.
Hello, my name is Samantha Sarantakis. I'm a resident at five-two-four Commercial Street in Braintree. This is my eighth year teaching English at Braintree High School. I am here this time, unlike the previous time I spoke, to advocate on behalf of my colleagues, many of whom today and Friday were notified informally that they were part of the RIF process, including myself. So, we've been hearing about a lot of numbers lately. My head is spinning, your head is spinning, but I have some more for you. My head is spinning, your head is spinning, but I have some more for you. 1, 3, 8, 10, 15, 17, 22, and I could keep going. These are just some of the number of years of service this district informally RIF'd. Roughly 100 staff members, including myself, are notified that they will not have a job, but they must wait until May 15th to receive a formal RIF. It is no longer a matter of if you lose talented and dedicated staff, but when. You have a chance now to do all you can to restore these individuals in a timely manner that will catch them before they leave for other jobs, and that $79 million budget isn't going to do it. We can no longer sit on the sidelines, and we can no longer be blissfully unaware. We can no longer be led by cowardly and weak-willed leaders as Braintree residents. Braintree's residents face a monumental task in the face of the immense struggle of the last several years. Residents admired educators during COVID. This district spent a year and a half negotiating a fair contract with its staff, and now this is the moment when we must stand united. We must demand information. We must demand transparency. We must demand the services we deserve. The time to point fingers is over. After all, when you point a finger, there are three more pointing back at you. The time to put our money where our mouths are is now. We must seek an override to protect what Braintree holds dear, not just for schools, but for the entire district. We must seek an override to retain the talent Braintree's children deserve. We must seek an override to stop the hemorrhaging. And with all due respect, school committee members, it is not your decision to determine what is realistic. Let the town voters decide. So I'll just repeat. 1, 3, 8, 10, 15, 17, 22. Years of service and knowledge lost. You can still stop it, but time is running out.
The next three names are Emma Koka, Isabel Leno, Kathy Kenny.
Hello, I'm Emma Kotsa, and I'm a sophomore at Braintree High School. And I'm here to request that you pass a tax override to help maintain all the staff, classes, and extracurriculars at our high school. Not a single person in this room would be where they are if it weren't for the help of their teachers. Even if they won't admit it, every student has a favorite teacher, a teacher that makes getting up early every day worth it and makes a difficult journey of learning just that much easier. But if an override is not passed, students will lose 100 of their favorite teachers, and the faculty will lose their coworkers and closest friends. Teachers have the ability to make or break a subject due to their passion and desire to help students, but there are only so many students one teacher can help, and increasing classroom sizes will severely limit the amount of help a student can receive. Some students require additional help when learning. And without a tax override, these students will fail to have their needs met. What would that mean for Braintree? It would mean our MCAS and exam scores would decline dramatically. Braintree is renowned for having students score well on their exams, which in turn enables them to get accepted into Ivy League universities. But it's nearly impossible to be accepted by such universities without gaining a proper education in the classroom with adequate attention from teachers. I've lived in the same house, on the same road, all of my life. And in those 16 years, I have seen perfectly intact roads and sidewalks repaved more times than I can count. Now, some may argue that those were necessary expenses to maintain an appealing town, but I ask in turn, is keeping our teachers not the same? Without our teachers and without access to the classes we as students desire to take, we are prioritizing the welfare of our cars and roads over the welfare of the humans that shape us. I, myself, am a very shy student. My current and past teachers could tell you how I rarely raise my hand in class to contribute, but I brought myself here today to speak before you all. I made sure to contribute to this meeting for my teachers, my coaches, and my fellow students who have everything to lose if a tax override is not voted upon. Thank you for your time.
Hi, my name is Isabel Leno, and I am a current sophomore at Braintree High School. I am here currently to help show my support and voice my feelings towards the deficit. I have a running joke with my friends that my future plans have been Ruby-approved. A dear friend of mine, Ruby, who has always excelled in academics and planning and always shown support for our community inside and out of school. And this same Ruby has approved of my academic plans for high school. So it may be a joke, but it's very important to me. And I thought that with only small changes would my plan change this upcoming year. Yet, with the possible removals of programs and teachers at my school, I would not be able to achieve what I could and already have done. My Ruby-approved plan for junior year was going to be accomplished, but now with the cuts and constant worry of what or who will go next, I no longer know if it is true. This community is crucial to the development of our student body. The structure of my Ruby-plan has wavered as classes and teachers are now up in the air. It has caused me, and I would bet many of our current BHS student body, to worry about their academic futures. My Ruby-approved plan involves taking business classes, art classes, multiple APs, along with yearbook. How will I be able to accomplish and complete goals that I thought were set in stone when I now lack the tools? School has always been there, year after year. We have always adapted to the next year that will be coming around the corner, but never did I think that I would be coming to a new school next year with a new type of school norm and my new junior year. The teachers and community at BHS provide a strong sense of security to a lot of people that they surround. My Ruby-approved plan may be the only way I can explain what I plan to do for the future, but I must wait for your decisions that will affect my future and my quality of education.
Hi, my name is Kathy Kenny. I've lived in Braintree for about 30 years. My children attended Hollis, East, and Braintree High School. And I also work as a media specialist at Liberty Elementary School, and I just wanted to talk a little bit more about the media program. Someone earlier said they were stunned. We were stunned March 25th. I still, and we still continue to be stunned that the program would be removed from the elementary schools. I can't even think about what a school would look like without a media center. For many of our students, it's their only opportunity to read and borrow books to bring home with them. At the beginning of every school year, it coincides with Library Card Month at their public library. I ask the kids, how many of them visit the library with their families? And not a lot of hands go up, and that dwindles by the fourth grade. So we take a lot of comfort in knowing that our role is filling that gap. Kids are going home with books every week, some coming back multiple times a week to get a new one. But media is so much more than the books. We provide instruction in computer science skills, starting in kindergarten. When our programming is lost, our students will not have this opportunity again until they reach Braintree High. Due to the digital literacy and computer science course that used to be at the middle-school level, that was also cut. So our lesson plans incorporate the DLCS standards, and they focus on general computer skills, research, coding, media literacy, STEM, digital safety, 3D design and printing, digital storytelling with video editing and production, the development of 21st-century skills, and I could just go on and on with what we do in our class. But really, what I see as the bigger issue here is that for many of our students, the instruction they receive in our class is the only exposure they will have to those critical computer science skills. Many families are not equipped with the knowledge or ability to instruct their children on these topics, and as a result, the students of Braintree will be left behind. And we've heard this already tonight in an increasingly digital world. The disparities we know to be evident in the computer science field for women, minorities, and those of lower economic status will grow even wider without access to the instruction we provide. Jake Baskin, the executive director of the Computer Science Teachers Association, says one way to combat the digital divide is through early exposure to instruction, primarily at the elementary school level. In quote, "Before we see disparities in participation based on gender, race, and economic groups..." Oops, sorry. I think something got cut there, but I think you get the point. The earlier we expose the kids to computer science, the better. The value of our positions within the Braintree Public School System cannot be overstated, yet we know that media is just one of the many cuts we are facing. Here, we're looking at this budget, and it's better than the 75, but it's not nearly good enough. The loss of dedicated teachers, school closures, increased class sizes, cutting of electives will devastate our schools. So we must ask ourselves, do we want our town to lose the most valuable asset it has? And that's our school system. If we lose our schools, we lose our town. Mayor Joyce, during your campaign, I was most excited by your assertion that you are a problem solver. And actually, that's a skill that we teach during media, problem solving. And without fully funding the budget, I appreciate that you are going to be putting forth an override. I think we will have an even bigger problem, and that is convincing young families that Braintree is a place that they can raise and educate their children. Thank you.
Excuse me, the next three names are Allison Cruz, Rashik Renganathan, Anna Flaherty.
Hello, members of the school committee. My name is Alyssa Cruz, and I am a student at South Middle School, who is currently in 7th grade. I'm here to speak on the matter of the state in which our town finds itself financially. There are several teachers who would be cut, as well as other edits made to the way Braintree schools function. The purpose of my speaking out on this is to propose that we move forward with an override. I have here a paper with 51 student signatures from my school who will stand with me on this matter. It may be a meager number, but it shows that there are students who don't want to be affected by the potential changes. The override may not be the best solution, but it is the most appropriate one we have at the moment. There are several teachers who would lose their jobs who need to support their families. And increasing the class sizes would make it even harder for the teachers who did remain to be able to provide every child with their educational needs. A larger environment might also prove stressful for some children, which could cause them to perform poorly. Getting rid of honors and advanced placement would deprive students of the same opportunities other children that came before them got to have. Honors and advanced placement allows children who are skilled at certain subjects to have the freedom to excel. This ensures that our future is full of bright minds who can benefit society. As for getting rid of languages and other subjects, we may lose the credibility needed in order to call a school a school. With schools shutting down, jobs would be lost, and children would lack education needed to progress in life. With the override, we could slowly start to earn back the money we have lost. It would be a helpful short-term solution until a better one could present itself. Franz Kafka, a novelist, once wrote, "Start with what is right rather than what is acceptable." This is as acceptable as it is right. It will save the jobs of over 100 teachers, as well as leave Braintree school students with the same choices students before them got. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Rashik Renganathan. I attend South Middle School, and I am an 8th grader. Unlike a lot of people in this room, I am quite unqualified to talk about a lot of things. But one thing that I can talk about is the school system, Braintree school system. Specifically, the public school system, a school system that I have grown up in and will continue to grow up in. You know, a word that you hear a lot here when listening to people is "community." And at South Middle School, we have a very, very strong community. I feel like a perfect example of this is the DC trip, which I saw a lot of my peers, who would have never talked to each other on any other circumstances, connect to each other in a completely and utterly humane way. And this is, you know, completely, you know, thanks to the teachers, the very core of the community that we have at South Middle School. If you would spend any time at almost any single class that we have at South Middle School, you would see the direct connection that a lot of the teachers have with their students. You would see them empathetically connecting with the students on almost everything. They care, and you can see that very, very clearly. Soon enough, if we go through with the firing of these 100-something teachers, that connection will be severed, and depriving that connection is depriving a powerful, powerful connection that kids have to schools. And some of these teachers, they teach the arts, which in many ways is the only form of expression a lot of kids have when it comes to the school system. By taking that away, I don't know what a lot of these kids have left. As far as our community that we have at South go, it is something that I am very proud of. The kids in my grade, the peers, I'm very proud of them. I'm very proud of the people that they are. They care about almost every other student, and that is no help to the teachers that are there every single day, giving it their all. The true merit of a community is shown by the compassionate actions its members have given. Looking around you, if you see anything but compassionate actions, I beg of you to look again. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Anna Flaherty. I live at 11 McQ Drive, and I am currently a freshman at Braintree High. I am here today because I want to make sure you understand how devastating it will be if these cuts to our school system go through. I have been in the Braintree Public School System from preschool until now. So while I have never been in a classroom with AC and have experienced my fair share of leaky roofs, I can attest that the true value of our schools has never been the buildings, but the teachers inside of them. There has never been a year when I didn't wish that my current teachers could rise to the next grade level with me. It's never seemed possible that next year's teachers could be as good as this year's, but I am always proven wrong. Every single teacher I've had has had a hand in shaping me into who I am today. Cutting even one of them would break my heart and leave the students behind me with less. Going into high school, I was terrified. I have always looked up to the students and athletes of Braintree High. The idea of becoming one of them was so scary. If it had been up to me, I would have stayed in middle school forever. However, I can honestly say this year has been one of my happiest, and I can only credit that to the teachers and staff of BHS whose jobs are now on the line. I had the opportunity to take all advanced honors classes this year, something that seemed like a very daunting task to me. But my middle-school teachers helped me believe that I could do it, and they were right, because they gave me the foundation that I needed academically as well as the confidence to take on the challenge. It was a hard adjustment, but through creative lessons, constructive feedback, and extra help from my new teachers, they pushed me farther than I ever thought I could go, and I am now on track to take two AP courses next year. I feel like I have learned more this year than I have learned in my entire life, and the students behind me deserve the same opportunities. And I am worried for my own opportunities as these AP courses I've worked hard to get to could be taken away from me. Cutting leveling in the AP classes means that some of the students will not be pushed to their full potential and deny others the special attention they need to thrive. The teachers of BHS go above and beyond to help students succeed, and the time they spend on that is what makes the difference between average and excellence in our learning. My teachers have taken an extraordinary amount of time offering extra help and tons of feedback. However, by making these cuts, the increased class size will make it impossible for teachers to have enough time to give the students what they deserve. A lot of teachers also stay after school to coach or run clubs. What truly made my freshman year was the Braintree Cross Country and Track and Field Program. I went into freshman year with no running experience. I only knew I wanted to be part of a team, to be involved, and it is because of my amazing coaches who believed in me that I am now a three-season varsity athlete who looks forward to practice every day and have never felt more fulfilled. I would be devastated, and it should be devastating to the school that there is a possibility of losing such hard-working and caring coaches who give kids places to belong. The students of Braintree cannot be reduced to numbers that simply do not fit in a budget. We are children with futures who desperately need these teachers and the programs they have to offer, and it would be a crime to deprive us of them. Thank you.
Amy Jamel and Quinlan Connors.
Hello, Chairman Heer, Mayor Joyce, committee members, and superintendent. I'm Autumn Ringus, 11 McQ Drive, Braintree. I'm currently a freshman at Braintree High School, and I'm here asking for you to make every every effort to restore teachers' jobs and for the mayor to get the tax override on the ballot. I believe that Braintree should be given the opportunity to vote to obtain the money needed to help save jobs. With the budget that has been mentioned and potential loss of jobs, the effects will be devastating and life-altering. With these cuts, the town will be forced to cut down on advanced placement classes that are offered, in addition to cutting down extracurriculars. Students, including myself, rely on these advanced placement classes, not only for more challenging classes, but also for college applications and possible college credits. It is unfair to take away opportunities from kids that excel in school just because the town cannot get their finances in order. By taking away these courses, the high school will be losing something it is known for and damaging its reputation. Cutting down on the extracurriculars will also cause a major impact on all students. With about 20 sports teams and over 50 clubs, Braintree High School is something for everyone to enjoy. Personally, I'm a three-sport athlete, class representative, and in various other clubs. These extracurriculars have allowed me to make new friendships and taught me things I wouldn't have been able to otherwise, things that aren't taught in the classroom. Extracurriculars are a part of school that all kids can enjoy, and cutting any of these would not be fair to the students. Students would be missing out on a vital part of their high school career. They would be missing out on a piece of school where students can define themselves outside the classroom, something they can carry with them for a lifetime. This new budget also means laying off up to 100 teachers. The teachers I have had throughout the Braintree school system have made me the person I am today. For example, my sixth and eighth grade art teacher, Ms. Piliotis, has had a huge impact on me. Whether it's typical teenage girl drama, family drama, or academic issues, she was there. I could always count on her. She sees the good in students and makes it her goal to have a relationship with every one of her students. She has gone from just my art teacher to a huge mentor in my life and someone I strive to be like every day. My current math teacher, Ms. Orzhinkowski, or Ms. O., as students call her, has also had a huge impact on me. She was the first teacher I got close to in high school and has helped me stop stressing so much about my grades and to actually enjoy about the time I have in high school. She has made me realize how fun high school is and how fortunate I am to be going to such a great school with such great opportunities. She has made me excited to come to school and not to wake up and dread it. She has done so much to ensure I realize the potential of my high school experience. Finally, for tonight, my track coach, who is also a physics teacher at the high school, has had a huge impact on me. Most people know him as Mr. Rich, but to me, he's coach. The track program as a whole has built me so many friendships I wouldn't have made otherwise, but Mr. Rich has made it so much more impactful. Mr. Rich cares for each one of his athletes individually. Personally, he's made me love a sport I initially took as a complete joke and something I was doing just to pass time. Track has now become a sport I love and a sport that I want to continue to grow in. More importantly than the love of a new sport, though, Mr. Rich has taught me so much about perseverance. Every practice and every meet, he pushes me to do my absolute best. Because of him, I have grown so much, not only as an athlete, but also as a person. Ms. Piliotis, Ms. O., and Mr. Rich stick out to me most, but I have not had a teacher in my career that didn't care about the students and put their all into us. The teachers Braintree has are vital to students' educations and experiences throughout the Braintree schools. Without these teachers, students are losing valuable bonds. Our teachers are the people that put in the work to make school fun and enjoyable, even on students' bad days. Every teacher I've had has shaped me into not only a better student, but into a better person, the person I am today. I am worried that throughout my coming years in high school, I'll be losing out on amazing opportunities that would be presented to me due to possible budget cuts. I also have younger cousins coming through the school system now, and a little sister who will eventually become in the Braintree school system. To even think that they will not be presented with the same opportunities I was is beyond devastating. It is unfair to the younger generations of students to be losing out on such important parts of their school careers. From what I have just explained, I hope you can truly realize how devastating these budget cuts would be on all students. I hope you listen and hear all the speakers that have talked tonight and on previous nights, and consider this in your budget deliberations. Mayor Joyce, I urge you to add the override to the ballot. Thank you.
Amy Jamelli? Don't see. Quinlin Connors? No? The next three, I can't read the next one. Can you read that?
It's like Alice. A-L-I-Y.
A-L-Y-A. A-L-I-Y-S?
Oh, you know, it's R-H-Y-S. Reese? Is that Reese?
No. Oh, thank you.
Hello, everybody. It's very late. Thank God we make it. I'm here because I have three kids going to this school. Two of my daughters already finished high school here, and Mr. Lee was their head of school, as good as I remember. My younger daughter, unfortunately, is child with special needs, and she is discriminated. Her rights are taken away by this district. She is not in school. I'm not here to complain. I just want to let you know that if the district put the money where they should go, there will be no need to cut anybody or anything. The lawyer who fights my daughter's rights for eight years now packed so much money that will pay all the teachers' pensions for years. Mr. Lee, have mercy. This child is out of school, out of rights, nobody cares, and the lawyer packed thousands and thousands every week. Instead of paying for lawyers who fight disability rights kids, to take them away, pay the teachers, help the children in the school. That will be so much easier, and everybody will be happy. I want to tell you something. My daughter switched 12 schools. As a special needs child, she has special needs. She did very bad in collaborative when the district sent her. She did bad in any school they sent her. Finally, she got school where she is straight A student. The district decided even the school is half cheaper than other schools. We're gonna take her away. We're gonna rip her away again. And they did. My daughter is one year out of school. District is paying to the lawyer and is offering school what costs four times more, but is one hour away. I'm not here just on behalf of my daughter. There is a lot of disabled kids in this district, but parents are afraid to talk. They have more kids, and they afraid the district will go after us and we have still kids in school. I'm not afraid, and Isaiah says, "You cannot do what you do." And I know everybody thanked you today, Mr. Lee, for the budget you did. I'm sorry, I cannot thank you for that. You can do better. I know you, 18 years, and I know you can do so much better. That is nothing to thank for. Fire the lawyer and hire the teacher. Let the kids be a kids. You know, the power over people that have to stop, the connections, who know who, this is what you're gonna get, that have to stop. Thank God we have new mayor and new hope. And I hope, you know, the old clique will go and rest, and people who want work, who care for the kids, will start work with us. That's all I have to say. And by the way, Mayor Joyce said, "Let's take a time and think about the reporter." I did take the time and I think about him. Please take the time now and think about the disabled kids and the parents who have to go through so much hard time, and they then have to hire lawyer who's gonna fight the district lawyer, who is fighting the child's rights to special education and to be human. Thank you.
All right, the next three are Diane, it looks like it starts with a K, but I can't make out the last name. Alyssa O'Leary, Matthew Zimmerman, and then Lauren Chiszkoskis? Chiszkoskis? So is it Diane? Looks like a K, starts with a K. Diane? Can you make that out? Because I can't. It's a little bit K. No Dianes?
Oh, I have a chair. I have to go.
Absolutely. All right. Alyssa O'Leary. Matthew Zimmerman.
My name is Alyssa O'Leary, and I am the parent of two elementary school students, and I live on Blanchard Boulevard in Braintree. I am the proud daughter of two now-retired Connecticut public school teachers. My mom taught HOMAC and my dad Tech Ed. Growing up, education, especially public education, was at the heart of our family. Its value was known and understood, and my parents were not the mainstream teachers, but just as important. They taught essential life skills, and for many students, these experiences and skills shaped their future. This holds true in our current conversations in Braintree regarding the great importance of media, foreign language, different specialists, really every teacher, as the list goes on and on, regarding those whose positions are in jeopardy. They are essential, and if they are cut, they and the programs as we know them will never be restored. When has HOMAC or Tech Ed last been offered at the Braintree Public Schools? My parents were the first people I called after attending the last school committee meeting last week. I'm not going to lie, I cried, and I cried as I tried to get all the information across to them. I cried, not only thinking for our sons and the potential for missed experiences, loss of essential support and services, and impact also on their future, also the consideration of my husband and I moving our family to another town that would provide to them what they would need. I cried for my neighbors, the teachers and administrators, our community, and the entire town, as this affects everyone, and we are all in this together. My parents then tried to reassure me and calm my fears. My dad then said the unthinkable, "Maybe you should consider private school in the future." No, Dad, no. I do not want to give up on the Braintree Public Schools and our elected officials yet. They need to steer our school department and town to success. You need to persevere and fully fund our schools to provide our students with the future they need and deserve. I fully support an override, and I also support a postponed vote until the next school committee meeting, until all options are fully vetted, especially those changes that were just presented. I thank you for your time and attention.
My name is Matt Zimmerman, and unlike most of you, I have lived in Braintree a hot minute. I've lived in Braintree for two and a half years, and my family is here. I've got an 11th grader at the high school. I've got seventh and eighth grade year-old boys, or seventh and eighth grade boys down at East. And as I think and as I listen tonight, it's deeply ironic for me to be standing here, because I was one of the kids, when I was a junior in senior high school, who decided I was gonna take on my superintendent and came and stood in these meetings and listened and was the "you don't understand this means so much." And so it's fun to be standing here and listening to it, and I just want to say thank you to the town of Braintree for creating an environment where my kids can walk, can drive down the street and watch their town have conversations. We do it much better than my town did growing up. To see the hundreds of people walking here, to know my daughter is sitting in this room right now, to sitting around our dinner table, listening to them talk about, you know, Madame Matar and how much she means to my daughter. But at the same time, hear my sons talk about how unsure they are that because of all this going on that they want to go to Braintree High School. How unsure that maybe a different school is where they want to go. To hear us, to hear sitting in this room tonight, a student say jokingly and everyone laugh that they've never had AC, nor never had the ability to sit in a room where they don't have a leaky roof. What is going on? To hear our town talk and have someone who's been in our town for 30 years ask the question, "How did you not know?" When my boys were playing Little League after we'd lived in town for less than three months, hearing, "We don't know how to manage our money." Hearing that, wait till they get into high school, hearing about the stack of dirt and going, and to know that I was in town for three months, and people going, "Man, how did you not know?" It just, it makes me wonder. So what do I ask you to do? I ask you to not listen to us. I ask you to, Mayor Joyce, be the person that I watched campaign as I sat at home and listened and watched Facebook. And so it's odd for me to say, "How did you not know don't listen to us?" When if you get on the Everything Braintree Facebook page, you watch people argue about, "Should we build a Chick-fil-A?" You watch people argue about, "Man, what about the apartments being built?" You watch, you go down my street and you watch a teacher walk into the home of her parents and have very different conversations about what we're talking about right now. A teacher who livelihood depends on this, but an old-school Braintree towns person go, "Man, we just don't vote because I don't know that I can trust the leaders to spend our money wisely." We all can tell the stories. We can tell the stories about swimming pools and all the other things that didn't get funded. Honest talk. I believe I can spend my money better than my elected officials can. Honestly, I'm a taxpayer, so you're gonna have to go up if we're gonna do this thing, and we're gonna vote for that thing right there. You're gonna have to convince the me's of the world that you can do it, that we can do this. So the biggest tragedy of any of this would be to go down this road or cut 100 teachers, and it make no difference. The biggest tragedy of any of this would be to watch and get all these kids excited that maybe they can make a difference, and it make no difference whatsoever. So what I'm asking you to do tonight is to lead. I'm asking you to come up with a plan. Come up with a plan that if you take it to the budget, if you take it to the voters and we win, and we get what we all want walking out of here to happen, I mean, that's why we're here. Nobody sitting in this room is here because we don't want to save the teachers' jobs. We all, well, I didn't wear pink because I forgot, but we all wore pink for one reason, right? But we're all on Team Braintree. So what I'm asking you to do is come up with a plan if this works, and come up with a plan if it doesn't. You're gonna have to win my neighbors. If it doesn't work, then what? Because our kids need it. So don't put all our eggs in one basket. I'm asking you to go do your homework, because honestly, I don't have time. I wish I could tell you I could do all the homework and figure out all the stuff and have all the other agencies. I don't know. I honestly do not know. I'm asking you to do what we voted for you to do. Please. Our kids need it. We need it. And on that note, if it is, this is Matt Zimmerman personal. If we do go down the road to having to make these cuts, surely there's a better answer than three study halls for my senior daughter. Surely, there's a better answer. So, would you do me a favor? Would you explore dual enrollment for me? Would you truly allow our seniors to take courses to earn senior credit and credit as freshmen? There's even plans all over the state of Massachusetts for that. Why not here? There's better plans than this. And so with that, I'm gonna shut up. I know somebody else has got something to say, but please lead us. Please lead us. We need it.
My name is Lauren Chiszkoskis. I live on St. Lawrence Street, and I have two daughters. I have a nine-year-old, who is a fourth grader at Liberty Elementary, and a five-year-old that is at base currently for preschool, who will be going into kindergarten next year. I also am the Liberty PTO treasurer and have served in that position for the past three years. My husband, who's home with our girls tonight, is a lifelong Braintree resident. He is a Liberty Elementary alum. He graduated Braintree High in 2002. I first moved to Braintree in 2011, when my husband and I bought our first home on Parkside Avenue. My oldest daughter attended St. Francis of Assisi for preschool and kindergarten before they abruptly closed in 2020 due to COVID. We sold our house on Parkside Avenue. Actually, Mr. Rollo sold our house on Parkside Avenue. Thank you, Justin. It sold for overask without a showing and no inspections. And I just happened to think like, would that happen today with all the unknown that's going on in Braintree? Would that happen if we got our school system? We purchased our current home in the late, late summer of 2020 and our daughter started first grade at Liberty Elementary remotely and eventually in person, knowing almost no one and having never gone to public school. From the moment we joined the Liberty School Community, we felt lucky to be there. Mila was fortunate enough to be placed in the class of a student favorite of veteran teacher Linda Wells. And while all the teachers at Liberty are amazing, Mrs. Wells really was the perfect fit for my daughter. She was welcoming and engaging. She kept a virtual classroom of six-year-olds interested in learning, which is a miracle, all while navigating the virtual teaching landscape herself. She had the most patience of anyone I've ever seen. And she even stopped by the house on numerous occasions to drop off classwork and to meet her students in person when in-person learning was not an option. When my daughter was finally allowed to go into the building, we quickly learned what a special place it was. I got involved with the PTO immediately, realizing quickly how much we parents provide for our students, both in our time and energy, but also financially. When I took over as treasurer three years ago, it became even more clear that our schools, our teachers, and most importantly, our students, needed us to help fill the gap. Providing basic services and supplies, programming like cultural arts and enrichment, as well as fun activities like Field Day or the Holiday Bazaar. This added layer of fun is an essential part of creating a love of learning. And honestly, we're happy and willing to provide those things. But we can only do so much. We should only have to do so much. This is, after all, a public school system where the basics for a solid education should be a town-wide expense. Parents and families are not the only ones who benefit from a successful and high-achieving school system. A school system's achievement, or lack thereof, directly impacts property values, community engagement, and many more things. In the past few weeks, I've had many people reach out asking what we as a PTO could do to help to solve Braintree's financial crisis. And while we're more than happy to help, to volunteer our time, to try to raise more money, to share out the valuable information with families within the school system or outside of the school system, to fight for our students, our schools, our teachers, and most importantly, our town as a whole, we need the leadership of this town to show up and do the same. We're relying on you, our kids are relying on you, to deliver a Braintree that lasts. The information that we're getting as a community is confusing. Even for someone like me who attends or listens to every school committee meeting, who spends a lot of time in the school talking with teachers and the administration, who represents Liberty on Superintendent Lee's advisory board. When people ask me questions about what's going on, it's hard to answer with any sort of confidence. Will the town go for an override? Will that override pass? Will our schools stay open? Where are our kids going to end up? What is the actual plan? And I know it's changing a lot and things are evolving, but it's almost impossible to get support from people when you don't actually know what's going on. I don't know where either of my children are going to end up next year. No one in this town does right now. And while I fully support redistricting and closing elementary schools or any schools, if that's what's needed to keep our children's education intact and to keep more great teachers on the payroll, it is a very scary place for parents to be. We can't prioritize one part of town over the other. That sends a terrible message. We need to think about Braintree as a whole. We can't cut essential services like reading specialists, math specialists, media, world language, and more for any of our kids. But most importantly, for the kids who are still struggling to catch up with the standards due to lost learning during COVID. We can't be a town where our students go to school for six hours a day but are only learning for part of that day. In overcrowded classes with overworked teachers with two to three studies. The leadership in this town owes us clear information communicated in a way that's easy to follow. Not just for families who care enough to pay attention, but for the town as a whole. I am confident that the people of Braintree want what's best for Braintree, but it's on all of you to make sure that we can get them the information and instill confidence in the decisions that leadership is making. Get together, get on the same page, you know, stop blaming each other, and come up with a plan that really works. Present it to the town and let us vote on an override. It's what we need and it's what we'll fight for. We can't risk losing the next generation of teachers. We can't risk the fate of this town and our children. We need you to fight with us and give Braintree a chance to not only survive, but to thrive. Thank you.
The next three names are Ellen Machid. I can't quite make it out. Machid, it looks like. Ellen, is there an Ellen? Melissa Hayes. Kathleen Lukowski.
Thank you for being here tonight. My name is Kathleen Lukowski. I'm a 14-year, 14-year resident at Stratmore Circle. I have three children spanning elementary school at Hollis and middle school at East. Let me first start by saying that I have full faith that Mayor Joyce will help guide us off of this fiscal cliff and out of this inherited situation. Doing so will certainly take time, and January 1st up until now has not been enough time to undo what's been done. It's become abundantly clear that Braintree has a tax revenue problem. As pulled directly from Mayor Joyce's campaign website, quote, "We will advocate for all of Braintree and find a path forward as a fiscally resilient community that uses data to support decision-making and engages residents as much as possible in the process that leaders, both elected and appointed at Town Hall, understand the nuances of connected decision-making and tie those back to fiscal stability." End quote. In the immediate future, I implore you to please fully fund our schools and save our teachers. An override is gravely needed, and that override should be all-encompassing and focused on saving all of Braintree. Prioritizing the schools makes financial sense as strong schools equate strong home values and in turn generate taxes that pay for police and fire and other town expenses. Compromising the schools puts the entire town at risk. Cutting teachers, increasing class sizes, haphazard redistricting, cutting media and math lab, for example, all of these actions are harmful and not without both long and short-term consequences. Please do not discount the importance of securing the support and momentum of families of school-aged children in order for an override to pass. This population in many cases includes those the most motivated to get the word out and to pay more. The townwide community reaction that's been elicited can be harnessed to determine ways to ensure that we're not faced with these same challenges next year or in the years to come. It will be a collective effort. Allow time for those with an ignited passion to better understand, to help brainstorm, and to bring forth ideas and action. Engage with us. Show us the data. Let us help provide guidance thus ensuring buy-in so communities will feel good about decisions that are made. Because as it stands now, a great many of us fear being abruptly ripped from our current community for the upcoming school year. Ripped from the friends and families and teachers that we've come through a global pandemic with. We've stuck with the Braintree school system, some haven't, and greatly appreciate and rely on the community that we're a part of. Everyone in this room values the community that they're a part of. Please fully fund the budget and show the teachers and students and parents of this town that you too agree that maintaining a strong BPS reputation is paramount. Thank you for your time.
Trong, excuse me, Trong Din Tamara. M A N G H I? Mangy? Victor Mankowski and Tracy Sullivan.
Hi, everyone. I'm back again. Trong Din. Live at 65 Dickerman Lane, Braintree, Mass. Teacher at the high school, parent of former students and parent of a single student. Everybody who's spoken has talked about the cuts and how devastating they will be. I know you all know how devastating they will be. You all know that what this school district needs is a maintenance of effort at the minimum, which is about $83.5 million. That's what we need. That is clear. I believe all of you know that, and I don't need to get into it. Everybody else has already. But when I talk to people who make these decisions, you, everybody else that has political power here, I keep running into the same thing, which is people are afraid. People are afraid of betting on the town to do what's right. And every time I talk to any politician, they're like, "But we don't know whether they'll support an override. We don't know what they'll do." And I always come back, it's like, "I have faith in this town. I know this town can do it." And people ask me, "How do I know that?" And I've really thought long and hard about it, and I now know why. I've watched it. I've seen in this room. This is why, and there used to be a lot more people in here. But this is why I believe in this town. They come out for this. When you tell them what's on, at stake, they will come out. They will do what needs to be done to pass a robust override. Not a small one, because this town cannot save itself on a small $6 million, $7 million, $8 million override. It needs a big override to save not just our schools, but to save our police, our fire, our public works. Everything that makes Braintree Braintree is in that override. And we will step up. We've seen people do it. This will be the army of people you need to talk to the rest of our neighbors to say, "What is at stake? Why are we Braintree Proud?" They're why we're Braintree Proud. Our teachers are why we're Braintree Proud. All of it. And again, I believe in these people. And I know why. It's because I teach the students that have grown up to be some of these voters. I know their parents because we've seen them speak with us at parent-teacher conferences. They are ready to be there and support this town. All they need is for either people to lead or get out of the way. So again, please do what's necessary for this town and have a robust override.
Hello. My name is Victor Mankowski, and I am a sophomore at Braintree High School who is involved in various art classes and activities. Today, I'm speaking about how art teachers, specifically Ms. Young, have affected my experience at Braintree High School. Ms. Young has such a vibrant and passionate personality and way of teaching her students. She goes out of her way to make a class enjoyable for all skill levels while giving her students a challenge. She always helps her students, no matter what she is going through. She has people challenge their ideas to create artwork that is creative and original while also exploring a new style or material. Recently, she helped me create a project that I was extremely proud of. It even got into the art show, which is soon. And she also gave me the opportunity to take AP Art in my junior year and senior year. Ms. Young has had a great impact on my experience at BHS, and I hope she can do the same for future generations to come at BHS.
Tracy Sullivan?
Good evening, and it is late in the evening. My name is Tracy Sullivan. I am a resident of Braintree, a fifth-grade teacher at South Middle School, and a mother of three daughters who have gone through Braintree schools. I'd like to speak to you as a teacher and tell you what the fifth-grade students will be experiencing next year. In September, these will not be fifth-grade students. Yes, that's the grade they will be entering, but really they have just completed fourth grade. So they are more like fourth graders. They are 10 and 11 years old. Because the middle school will be cutting math lab and art is becoming a half-a-year course, some of these students may have up to two studies a day for three out of six-day cycle. That is almost one-third of the day, three days a week, in a study with no academic learning. Currently, fifth graders have no studies, and the school committee worked very hard last year to make sure that happened, and I do thank you for that because it's been a very good benefit. It seems like we are taking a big step backwards and a reverse of this, of last year's efforts. At 10 and 11 years old, some students will be immature enough to do homework and read, and some others will not. Will these students have 88 minutes of homework? Not according to the fifth-grade homework policy. Now, as we contemplate all that and study, all that time in study hall, think about what we, the teachers, parents, school administrators, and residents have been trying to do to help these students to recover from 2020. Yes, COVID. As educators, we have seen the gaps in the learning. We have seen the emotional and social effects, and I'm sure there are effects that we haven't seen yet. How can we close those gaps without math lab classes and students in study halls instead? How can we help with the emotional and social effects when there are so many students in the classroom? With 25 to 30 students in a class, we won't be able to get to know these students and therefore know when they are struggling. Sure, some of the students will be obvious that they are struggling, but what about that quiet student who flies under the radar? And I had one of those. It breaks my heart to think about the students who won't get what they need to succeed next year or the next, or the next. They may get passing grades. They may come in and out of our classes seemingly fine, but are they fine? Are they succeeding to the best of their abilities? This is a generation of students that is going to be adversely affected by these cuts. These students have lived through COVID, and now we are asking them to live through devastating cuts to their education. How much more are we going to ask these students to endure? Thank you for listening.
The next few names, Harrison Kitchen? Jean Mitchell and Dan McCabe. And then Ellen Lee and Alice. Harrison? Jean Mitchell? Dan McCabe? Ellen Lee? Alice X L, X U is the last name? I can't quite tell. No? Teresa? I always have a hard time with this. You know who I, thank you. Spansky? Close?
This is what I do with my students. Shu-Span-ski. Okay, there you go. My name's Teresa Shaspansky. I have two elementary school students and a third child who will enter BPS in 2025. And I live at, on Blanchard Boulevard. In times of crisis, we can respond with denial, anger, deflection of responsibility, and divisive rhetoric. Or we can choose to come together and agree on a set of prioritized values and principles from which to make a plan. Can we agree to a set of shared values for our community? As a parent and a taxpayer, I would gladly contribute to a plan that upholds the following. Please preserve programming for our children and the essential staff that provide that programming by seeking out funds or cutting from other areas of the budget rather than eliminating programs for our students. Schools should not be timed babysitting with nothing to do. It should be, have programming. Prioritize, number two, please prioritize relationships. This includes people over structures. I ask any parent in this town when faced with the choice of having their child leave the school committee in which they, community in which they are known versus having to leave a building but continue to attend a school with the friends, teachers, and programs that they love, I doubt there's anyone that would choose the building. Respecting neighborhood boundaries. Neighborhoods and neighbors are community safety nets we want to preserve as much as possible. Minimizing traveling distance to schools. And applying grandfathering where possible when or if at some point you make changes to where children go to school. Number three, please prioritize long-term fiscal responsibility. Show the public that your plan is vetted by using verified sources of population projections to make plans. Several community members and I shared with you examples of professionally-vetted redistricting plans in December of 2022. Please prioritize, number four, transparency and communication with your residents. There should be a corresponding map for all of the proposed districts if at some point we redistrict. So that every child is accounted for and every family would know exactly where their kid would go to school and would know any programmatic changes that are happening for their children before a single vote is cast by anyone. Please, Ms. Fiskager and school committee, I ask that you demand for a plan that preserves programming, prioritizes relationships, programming, prioritizes relationships, is fiscally responsible, and is fully communicated with the residents of Braintree. Mayor Joyce, please allow your community to exercise their right to vote on a lasting investment in the future of this town. Just with that, I'd like to say. 1946, a 10-year-old boy receives a knock on his door. A 10-year-old boy in Germany. It is his teacher, his physics teacher. He's not slated in a school that will lead him to college. He's in the second tier of school. His mother is a widower. His father died in the war. He is an only child with a struggling mother, and his physics teacher said, "He doesn't belong here. He should be going to college. You need to get him to the other school. He's smart." That is my children's grandfather. Without that relationship, without those teachers, my kids wouldn't be here. Yeah, it matters. The budget matters, but the relationships also matter. I will pay. I will pay for any child to get that knock on the door. I'm forever grateful for that, and I'm grateful for all of your work. Thank you.
Megan Stellman. Lucas Augustinos. Caroline Caldwell.
Well, it's always hard to follow Teresa. My name is Megan Stellman. I live at Blanchard Boulevard. I have a daughter at Flaherty and another child who will be entering the first grade in the fall. Like others before me, I'm speaking in defense of the media program. More than someone who checks out books, I'm a media specialist and school librarians, art information literacy experts who have advanced degrees in their fields, often with additional certifications. Media class has intrinsic value above and beyond providing a prep for a classroom teacher. Media specialists and librarians teach lessons based on digital literacy and computer science standards, the Massachusetts School Library Association's information literacy frameworks, the Mass History and Social Studies frameworks, and more. They teach scheduled classes and also promote drop-in lessons on research and media literacy. They also provide guidance to students who visit the media center. Braintree High School, East Middle School, and South Middle School are currently members of the Mass Library System. The Mass Library System provides access to the more than 50 databases that students currently use. This access is dependent upon the employment of a full-time credentialed librarian at the high school. In addition to providing content written by subject matter experts, these databases are heavily referenced by students to complete the state-mended civics projects in eighth grade and in high school. Cutting media and school librarians is often a quick solution, maybe by people who don't understand the deep impact of the program across all grade levels from K through 12. You might have fond memories of visiting a dusty library in your youth, staffed by a kind librarian, not realizing that, while they also probably did more than we realized back then, and I'm one of them, now we're also deeply involved in the digital information literacy. So please think carefully and long about cutting the media department in Braintree. Thank you.
Hi, before I begin, I just want to excuse myself already. I'm going to cough a lot. My cough syrup has already worn off. I didn't anticipate being here this long. Anyways, good evening. My name is Lucas Augustinos. I'm a current senior at Braintree High School. Throughout my four years at Braintree High, I've had the absolute pleasure of taking classes such as Spanish I with Mr. Nichols, 11th Grade Writing and Literature with Ms. Rollo, Fine Arts I, II, and III with Ms. Young, and Forensic Science with Ms. Sannick. I cannot stress enough the importance of teachers in the building. Not only have these teachers helped me grow academically, but they have also helped me grow as a person. Mr. Nichols has not only taught me that buscar means to look for in Spanish, but to also look for the good in my peers in the world at large. This is one of the most important lessons I will walk away from BHS with. Ms. Young has taught me the elements of art and the principles of design, but more importantly, to believe in myself. She sat by my side, encouraging me and helping me as I evolved from poorly drawn stick figures in Fine Arts I to full-blown caricatures in Fine Arts III, walking me through the process and encouraging me every step of the way. Ms. Rollo has not only taught me that the semicolon is a powerful tool used to evolve writing style, she has also taught me the importance of being around to talk and just being there for somebody. Without her and her grammar tips, I wouldn't have been able to write my college essay. Finally, Ms. Sannick has taught me how to run a crime scene in jail elector for recess. She has also instilled in me that I should question everything and take time to reflect. Without these values, I wouldn't be who I am today. Although it seems more economical and taxpayer-friendly, cutting teachers, closing schools, and decreasing electives is not the solution. The heartbeat of the Braintree Public School system are its amazing teachers and faculty. Every day, teachers come into the school to support their students, some coming from within Braintree while others coming as far as Rhode Island. All are here because they care. Cutting teachers and courses will seriously harm the students' ability to build a connection with the amazing teachers who dedicate so much time and energy. The teachers left in the wake of these cuts will be spread too thin, because they will have to do even more to keep our schools afloat. I have made countless meaningful connections to amazing people over the past four years and learned so many valuables that reach outside the classroom. The lives of over 5,000 students are in your hands. Please consider moving forward with the suggestion of raising taxes to keep their futures on track. Thank you all so much for your time.
Good evening. My name is Caroline Caldwell, and I am a senior at Braintree High School. I have attended Braintree Public Schools since I was in first grade. Last year, as a junior, I had the pleasure of taking Ms. Joseline Matar's French class, Level Four Honors. I can confidently say that this class changed my life. It not only enhanced my knowledge of how important it is to learn another language, but I know I have found a mentor for life in Ms. Matar. Ms. Matar possesses a vast knowledge and understanding of the French language and did a phenomenal job of teaching it to my entire class. She also happens to be the only native speaker of the language that she teaches in the language department. She instilled in me the importance of learning another language and having a knowledge of different cultures. Besides being a wonderful teacher, Ms. Matar is above all else a friend. She is always there for all of her students, whether to talk, laugh, put a smile on your face, or give advice, whether it be about her class or life in general. She is truly one of the kindest, most warm-hearted, most generous people I know, and I'm sure everyone who knows her would agree. Her class made me excited to go to school every day, and I never left her classroom without a smile on my face. As the daughter of a teacher for Weymouth Public Schools, I know the impact a teacher can have on students' lives, and I can confidently say that Ms. Matar has had a very strong, positive impact on my life. Some other Braintree teachers who have had a strong, positive impact on my life are Mrs. Myers, Mr. Batch, Mr. Condon, Mr. Crawl, Ms. Nadia Johnson, Mr. Pelletier, Ms. Lisa Murphy, Mr. Wiggan, and Mr. Jeffries, just to name a few. I appreciate every single educator in this town. Back to the topic of linguistics, Ms. Matar is also fluent in three languages: French, English, and Arabic. Recently, before the budget concerns were announced, Braintree High approved teaching an Arabic language elective for the next school year. Over 20 students signed up to take that class, showing how students are invested in learning other languages. This year, I also had the privilege of taking the elective, Intro to the Latin and Roman World, taught by our principal, Dr. Scully. It was a very enlightening class about the ancient world, which I feel is a vital subject to be educated on, and was also a class about the Latin language. Electives are such an important part of this school that it would be a travesty to not be able to offer most of them anymore. Electives are curated for students and their interests. Being able to take a class in my high school that touched on ancient history was such a cool experience, as it is what I am planning on studying in college. Other electives, like public speaking, have also gave me important skills for life. I feel it is truly a shame if our school will not be able to offer classes like the Latin, Arabic, public speaking electives, and more, let alone core language classes such as French. I have continued my French education with another incredible teacher, Ms. Heller. She has very much so educated me on how important it is for young minds to learn a different language. Ms. Heller is one of the most enthusiastic and educated people I have met when it comes to the subject of linguistics, and I have had her as my teacher my sophomore and senior year. I implore everyone of voting age to take action in protecting all of the departments that are so near and dear to hundreds of students and faculty's hearts, and to protect the highly praised education system that the town of Braintree has.
Thank you. All right, I apologize. I can't make out the first name. Last name is Doan, D O A N. No. Mary O'Donnell. Then, uh... Last name Fitzgerald. Is it Nelly? Nelly, Mellie? Molly, sorry, Molly.
Good evening. My name's Mary O'Donnell, and I live at 62 Kramer Road. I'm speaking today as both a Braintree resident, a parent of children who have graduated from the Braintree Schools, and as a Braintree schoolteacher myself, 13 years at East Middle School. The reason my husband and I chose to live in Braintree was because of the excellent school system. The smaller class sizes, outstanding teachers, and high quality of education were the primary reasons that we moved to this town. Even though our children have graduated, we still value the education of our Braintree students. If our school budget is not fully funded, the quality of education will be directly impacted, which in turn will be devastating to our students and their families. In addition, the quality of our educational system directly affects the property of our homes, the property values of our homes, and impacts people's decisions to move here and to stay here. Cuts in educational programs that were made when my children were young have not been reinstated. As a Braintree teacher, I know the reality of trying to meet the social, emotional, and academic needs of my students during this post-COVID time, and any budgetary reductions will greatly harm the children of Braintree in the town for years to come. Thank you.
Hi, everyone. My name is Molly Fitzgerald. I am a Braintree resident. I live at 25 Commercial Street. I'm a parent to a little one who I hope one day will be a Braintree student. I teach at the high school, and I'm also the vice president of the Braintree Education Association. I'm not going to insult you all or to take up people's time right now to explain in depth what the job of a school committee member is. I'm fairly certain everyone in this room knows that it is to advocate for the students of the town. It is not to balance a budget or to engage in political maneuvering. It's to ensure that our students' needs are being met. So if a member of the school committee decides to advocate for a budget short of maintenance of standards, which according to Superintendent Lee is $83.5 million, they are advocating to cut services for students. I promise you, this is not what's in the best interest of the students. I believe those of you sitting here right now don't need me to point this out. We are all in the same boat right now, and it is sinking. As members of the school committee, you have the power to make decisions to help. You can get us to lifeboats. Nobody is confused into thinking there's an easy and quick fix, but there's a clear need for an education budget that can support the schools. I understand that this implies the need not only for an override, but one that is strong enough to support the schools and all of the other departments that the residents of this town rely on. Mayor Joyce, you have said that this deficit is $18 million. I fully understand what an override in this amount means for the taxpayers of this town, and I recognize it is not an easy decision to ask my neighbors to have a higher bill when the cost of living is already high as it is. I take on a bill of more than $1,000 a month for the health insurance that this town offers its employees, which is a cost that me and my fellow public workers take on to alleviate taxes for this town. Braintree has some of the lowest taxes for a town with services at this level, and in terms of our education budget, we have close to the lowest cost per pupil spending as compared to public schools in other towns in Massachusetts. We are long overdue for an override, and we are long overdue for leaders who will stand up for public services. Mayor Joyce, I voted for you because you promised change and bold leadership in the face of difficult decisions. I still believe you have it in you. We are at a pivotal point in the history of this town. This crossroads that we are at can lead us in two very different directions. One is to save all of the services and advocate for what is right and what will keep this town a desirable place to live in with healthy services and a public that is taken care of. The other, the other two options that have been thrown around today involve reductions in services that will lead to the removal of programs and damage that's irreversible. You all have the power to advocate for the change that we need, and I am asking you to do this. Thank you.
Sorry. Deb Crowley, Amy Oulet, and Kara Slattery.
Good evening. I spoke last week and shared my story. Much like many others, it's about a young family who moved to Braintree, a wonderful town, lots to offer its residents, and a school system with an outstanding reputation. That was 24 years ago, and a lot has changed. 10 to 15 years ago, my kids would ask to go to the mall with their friends. My husband and I would sit in the food court, and they would walk around the mall with their friends. That was 10 to 15 years ago, and a lot has changed. Today, our town faces budget gaps totaling as much as $18 million, and we are considering closing school buildings. On Friday, 100 educators began their weekend break with an email inviting them to a meeting to confirm that if nothing changes, they will lose their job. If we stay this course, so much more will change. People can say an override has never passed in Braintree. If we don't change that, never, our teachers will find jobs elsewhere. Our police and fire will be cut significantly, jeopardizing the safety of our town. Our town will fail, and our worst fears will become realities. Isn't it time for positive change? Isn't it time for Braintree to do better? I stand here tonight asking the school committee to vote through a fully-funded budget, because that is what is best for the Braintree students. Asking you, Mayor Joyce, to seek an override, not just to close our budget gap, but to eliminate it, because that is the best for our town. I ask the residents of Braintree to consider the path we are on and seek a more positive future by voting yes to a fully-funded override. Lastly, and a little off-topic, I would like to thank you, Mr. Lee. As one of your, as one of your employees, the consideration and respect you have shown your staff through this process has not gone unnoticed. We appreciate all of your efforts to do right by us and keep us informed. Thank you all.
Amy Oulet? Kara Slattery?
Hi, I'm Kara Slattery. I live in 97 Parks Side Ave. I have two kids, second grade at Flaherty. I'm exhausted. I see a bunch of people are also yawning. So I'll make this a quick, you know, thank you to everyone, students especially, for sharing your experiences. I mean, that's tremendous, and that speaks volume well over, you know, what I could possibly add. And I think, you know, reviewing all the information to this point, you know, I want to just bring to light, you know, the transparency I want to see moving forward. You know, I think, again, Superintendent Lee has been brought to the table as much as he can, as quickly as he can, and I appreciate that. You know, the, everything's moving so quickly. I haven't had time to absorb it. I don't know if anyone else has. You know, I want to see that these things are brought to the community also as quickly as possible from everyone. You know, I think the website for the school committee of the town is so unreadable that to have better direction for us to find everything, whether it be budget, presentations, the agendas, the minutes, would be fantastic. You know, it would be great to keep media for that. But that's, you know, that's one issue I have. Another is also keeping responsibility and accountability with the school committee. You know, that goes on to the town council. But everyone really standing up. I know everyone has their job descriptions, but standing up and saying, I got this, and being loud to us and letting us know what you're standing for, for us. Again, I heard someone say earlier about, you know, what your resume stands for, your CVs. CVs, I, you know, today, moving forward, what do you have for us and how are you going to do it for us? Where, how are you going to connect with each other? What are your responsibilities to the school committee as a whole? Now, I'm so siloed, you know, I want to see how you're going to connect and work together for us, you know, it's elected positions, we want you to work, you know, do the best for us, our kids, our school system, our town. The next is, you know, kind of more to the community. You know, I've heard a lot of people speak individually about the, you know, their elementary schools, or the middle schools, or the high school, but, you know, again, but I've heard more about the unity tonight, but we are a collective community, Braintree, a collective school system. You know, all across the schools, the neighborhoods, you know, coming together, speaking, being a united voice, pressuring the school committee to work for us, pressuring the mayor's office to work for us, pressuring the town council to work for us. You know, we elected the people to do the best for our, for our community, our families, our homes, our children. We elected them to appoint people to also do the same. So let's be a loud voice collectively together. If we want to look at, you know, a palatable number, we see big numbers for this budget. To bring it back to kind of an ASPCA style, for the price of a cup of coffee a day, you can save your child's education with these tax increases. For, I, I looked at the site, you know, for, for a tax increase of eight hundred dollars a year for my house, that's, that's a cup of coffee a day. I can afford that for my kid, kids. For sixty-seven dollars a month, that's what it'd be, I can give up a mani-pedi for that, for my kids, for your kids, for the, for the town. That would come to, with all house, taxpaying houses in this city, one million five hundred twenty-five thousand six hundred dollars. Eight hundred dollars a house per year in, in tax increases. I think most normal people, hopefully, even that's on average, bring that to a vote. Not the huge number, bring eight hundred dollars and that total number that would bring in revenue, and that to a vote, and that's not so scary. So, have a good night, thank you.
Is it Adrija? A-D-R-A-R-I-J-A?
Good evening, or night, I guess now. My name is Adrija Metra, and I'm a current sophomore at Braintree High School. I speak for many people when I say that school is not only a place of learning, but a place where students can feel safe and comfortable to grow and become individuals prepared to take on the world. For me, one of my favorite and most integral parts for school is the music department. I will go as far as to say that it is my home at the school, certainly the place I spend the most time, and what connects me to the school community. I play violin in our school's chamber orchestra, string band, and am a member of the Trium Music Honor Society. This school's music program and its amazing teachers have prepared me for important auditions and performances, and given me priceless connections. However, all of this feels insignificant when compared to the fact that I'm truly close with all of the music teachers and students. And I'm one of the many people who go to these rooms as a safe space, where they can always find someone to talk to, or something fun and relaxing to do, in the midst of the obvious daily stresses of high school. And I know that our teachers in these departments are what make it such an amazing, loving space for everyone to be themselves. I would like to shout out my teacher, Dr. S., who is not only a music teacher and a conductor, but a mentor and a friend, who has made school a better place for countless students, including myself. Just like all our staff, she works really hard day in and day out to not only teach high school students, which of course in itself is not a very easy job, but also to make everybody feel loved and included and understood. I cannot stress how much this has impacted my life and my education, and my overall love for going to school every single day. Braintree students are the future of this town, and its teachers are the foundation that encourages and cultivates this future. We cannot compromise in our schools, or we are compromising our future. Many, many of our beloved teachers who have done nothing but work hard to share their passions with their students will be losing their jobs. Many, many students with bright minds and bright futures will be losing important role models, guides, and people who they have been able to turn to. Speaking as one of those students, I'm struggling to even register this might be the reality of my high school next year. AP classes and electives that I was excited to take, not to mention their obvious benefits in further education, being cut. Some of my most loved and trusted teachers being cut. Along with all this, of course, accreditation for our school lost, possibly. I, I know I speak for all my friends and many other students when I say that we cannot let this become the reality of our high school. Along with countless other BPS students who care about their teachers and about their education, especially those who are still here because you clearly care about this more than your sleep, I guess. I came here today to say that we must protect our schools and our staff, to give our students the proper opportunities and environment to learn and grow, so we can protect the town's future. In conclusion, we must pass this override that will fund this future and save the students and staff, the people who are the heartbeat of this town. Thank you.
Is it Malalika Ahmad? Lauren Stenman?
Hello, committee members, fellow students, and the public. My name is Lauren Stenman, I'm a current senior at Braintree High School, and today I've come to speak to you about how these cuts affect students just like myself. I'm an athlete, musician, scholar, environmentalist, and so much more. I've also taken a wide variety of leveled courses and met a wide variety of teachers currently at risk of being cut. One specific course, near and dear to my heart, where the teachers and classes are at risk of being cut is the music department. I've been performing music since I was in the first grade, and have continued all the way through my high school career here at Braintree in the BHS band. The amazing teachers and support that I have received as a music student has allowed me to flourish in my community. From Dr. S. at Morrison, Mr. Pearson, and Mr. Allen East, Mr. Buckley at the high school, all the teachers I have had have been amazing mentors and are always there for me, even still to this day. And Mr. Buckley, I have not just found a mentor and a teacher, but a friend. I know that he has been and will always be there for me when I need him, and he cares deeply for all of his students, all of the music teachers do. We have exactly three music teachers at BHS. Three. One mainly focuses on orchestra, one on chorus, and one on band. Cutting just one of these teachers forces another teacher to get out of their comfort zone, abandon and cut some of the electives that they teach, an entirely different program. While not impossible, it is improbable and highly stressful for the other two teachers who have to pick up the classes of the teacher who ends up being cut. Not to mention all of the music electives that could end up being cut were very limited, music tech, learned to jam, popular music appreciation, just to name a few. Not a single teacher or staff member at Braintree's school system deserves to be cut because as a town, we cannot provide the adequate budget for our children's education, but especially not the music and art teachers who provide such a unique and amazing experience to our students. As a senior, the end of the year is a time of reflection and sentiment. I have lived in this wonderful town for the entirety of my schooling career, and I do not wish to see it fall apart right as I am about to leave, because I have friends, family, who are still growing up in the school system, and deserve the same opportunities that I have had my past seventeen years of life. Cutting programs or this amount of teachers at any of the schools in Braintree is detrimental to the students, and we must find the money to fund schools somewhere else. We cannot live in fear, we must band together in hope and unity. We need eighty-three. We need and deserve a fully funded education. To finish, I will simply quote our own Braintree Public Schools website. Music is essential to the education of all children. Music is an integral component of the lifelong learning process by which individuals develop as members of society. The ability to perform, create, and listen to music with understanding is desirable for every member of society. Thank you.
John Cass, Cole Vander, and I'm sorry, I can't read the next one. Is that with M.A.N.? First name M.A.N., last name?
Thank you, I hope you're well. My name's John Cass, a resident of Washington Street, Highway thirty-seven in the Highlands. My wife Karen and I have lived here in Braintree since twenty thirteen. We moved here because we had family and friends here, and there was beld with good power. And the town had a good reputation for schools. Last Wednesday night, we attended the Q and A session for the Highlands PTO. I was struck by all of the voices of the parents and the alumni of the elementary school. Everyone was in shock and upset about the news. Folks were in complete turmoil, their lives turned upside down. As folks may know, I've been writing about the schools and the poor state of the buildings for quite a while now. That evening changed my perspective, though, and the meaning of the school and its importance to the neighborhood. My kids are eleven and seventeen, my oldest is in high school, and my youngest will be attending South next year. And so for our family, the closure of Highlands wouldn't have as much direct impact. But when I heard what its closure would mean to the families who have been here for generations, and also to the families who have kids still to go to the school, into the school district, I thought it's worth fighting to not only keep Highland School in that location, but my heart went out to every neighbor with their stories of anguish. I am for the override, because we haven't planned for this amount of change in so short a period of time. I'm also for a process that involves more than sixteen people. We need to give the voters the options to vote. Once the vote goes through, then we can support it, even if we disagree with the result. I urge the committee to give Braintree time to come up with a better solution, and I urge my fellow citizens to get involved. You have agency, you have permission to change the town, just as John Adams did in seventeen sixty-five with the Braintree Instructions, and General Thayer did when he set up Thayer Academy, providing free grammar school education to Braintree students from eighteen seventy-seven to nineteen twenty. And Elizabeth and Thomas Watson did when they both set up a townwide kindergarten for Braintree students in eighteen ninety-two, using the resources of the Four River Engine Company. You can be like these great people, they were ordinary people, you have the ability to make a difference. Lastly, I urge the school committee to pass a full override of the eighty-three point five million dollars. Thank you.
Cole Vander? Uh, Kim Crowa?
Good evening, everyone, thank you for the hard work you put in. My name's Kim Crowa, I live at forty-two Herbert Road, I have two kids in the school system, eight and ten years old, and I want to just say, there's been a lot of work going on, and I appreciate the time and the effort that's been put in. Up here with a couple points, so I have another ten years with the kids to go through the school system here, and if it's an eighteen million dollar override, I of course would fully support it, and I would push it out as much as I can. But I would do that for two reasons. The first one being the obvious one, is that I'm fully invested, my kids are in the school, and the people who love my kids and care for them in school, out of school, coaching, going to their plays, those are the people who are affected, and so I'm all in on that. Number two, I can afford it, it's not that big of an impact on my life. Excuse me. But that's not all of Braintree, and Braintree are the people who are voting for an override that gets put into place. And so as hard as the decision is going to be tonight, I'm asking you to vote in favor of the seventy-nine million dollar budget, that's not great, and to not vote in favor of the eighty-three million, as hard as that is, because this is a townwide problem that we're in right now, and we need to show everybody that we're working together. We need buy-in from the parents, we need buy-in from the residents, we need buy-in from the superintendent who's put together a lot of information, the mayor's office, the school committee, the teachers' unions, the teachers, the staff, everybody involved with the schools, and in the other town departments. This is of course not the only budget meeting that's going on, there's a lot of them, and, and if we're going to sell an override on the town, we need to do it on the dollar amount, and we need to do it by showing that we can, as a town, come together and make this work going forward and try to come up with a sustainable path. And, so that's what I'm asking of you for tonight. I don't really know what the numbers mean as far as what makes sense, what doesn't, but I think showing that we're in this together. You know, I can only hope that my kids go through the school system and are nearly as well spoken as so many of the young people who got up here today. Everybody cares, everybody wants us to work, but when we look at what the numbers are, the total tax revenue for the real estate taxes in Braintree is about a hundred and ten million. When we're talking about an eighteen million dollar override, that's a sixteen percent increase. Now, the commercial tax rate is double the residential rate for the most part, and so more of that goes on the commercial rate than the residence. But that's a big number, when you're out there talking to people, that is a big number. And so I just ask you to think about how all of this comes together, and, you know, hopefully we can get some sleep at some point tonight, but thank you all.
Valentina? Maya?
Hi, my name is Valentina Lynn, and I'm a senior at Braintree High School. I have two younger siblings, one who is about to enter seventh grade, he wants to learn French next year but can't because of the cuts. We talk about music, arts, but it's also languages and many core classes that are also affected if this override doesn't happen. Ms. Jameson, a teacher that loves and cares for her students, motivated me to learn and love a language that wasn't my first, but have resonated with me. She is kind, thoughtful, and her positive attitude, engaging teaching style, and passion for her job has helped to get even the quietest kids in class to talk and laugh. She, along with countless other Spanish and arts teachers, truly shaped my BHS experience. My sister, who is about to enter third grade, won't be able to have the same opportunities as I did when she goes, when she goes to high school, because when something is cut, it doesn't come back. Ms. Murphy always talks about having woodwork and cooking classes when she first worked here, but I'm sure that my fellow peers didn't even know they, they had ever existed because it was cut. And like all, and like all classes that are raised, they won't be brought back. Ms. Soren Takis, my ninth grade English teacher, and also yearbook advisor, has brought many opportunities to BHS. As the cuts occur, I feel sorry for, I feel sorry the rising seniors, current juniors, and future high, high school students that will have to face next year without a way to commemorate their high school experiences in a form of a yearbook. As I quote my friend Mahathim when she found out she was going to have a yearbook next year, she said, "What the actual fuck?" Ms. Shipp's, my current forensics teacher, who hasn't just been a teacher, but someone who can talk, who you can talk to, a friend. I remember the moments we talked about college life, depths, and finances. She wasn't just teaching me about forensics, but also life lessons that'll help me, that'll help me in the future. I can keep dropping names after names after names, people who future BHS students won't meet, because they will be gone next year. Students will never experience and meet memorable members of our school system that have changed my life. I'm not just speaking for myself, but as well as future students, my siblings, my friends, and other children that deserve the opportunities I was given. If this override doesn't get passed, we are losing on life experiences, important people, and things we won't get back. As I quote from one of my favorite book series, Hunger Games, "Fire is catching, and if we burn, you burn with us."
Hello. My name is Manawak Bonhom. I'm a senior at Braintree High School. I've lived in the Highlands area, and I'm also the student body president of Braintree High School. This morning, I woke up at about six fifteen a.m. I went to school, had a test first block, I think I failed it. And then I had, went back home, then I went to practice, then I went back home, then I came here and waited for four hours. Now, why on earth would somebody do all this if he's a senior who's not even going to be affected by this? It's because I feel like this is an absolute shame to the future students of Braintree. I think it's very disappointing to hear about teachers being brought to tears, not knowing if they're going to be able to help support their families next year, even those up to ten years of experience, having to deal with pink slips. I think it's disappointing that future students won't be able to have some of the access and some of the experiences I had. I know that it's disappointing, because I remember telling my brother, who was here but fell asleep somewhere, he said, I told him, "French, Mr. Flanagan, Euro, those are my best electives. Those are my favorite electives." And now we risk not having those electives for our students in the future generations. And I think those are extremely disappointing factors. I understand it is a very difficult process to go through, and it's not as easy as people make it seem, but I feel like there is no compromise between a maybe and in the middle. I feel like we need the eighty-three million dollars to support our education system, because without education, what is the town of Braintree? I think it's extremely important for people to learn. I don't think it's effective for three studies to happen in a senior day. I know that now I don't really have homework, and I don't know what I would do with three hours. I don't even know what to do with my time at home. So I feel like by not doing this, it lets our town down, lets teachers down, lets students down, it lets the future generations who aren't even born down. Thank you.
Anybody else in the room who didn't sign up who's interested in speaking?
Hopefully, I'm the last one. My name is Suzanne Jackson. I live at eighteen oh-two Washington Street, proud mother of two children, who have gone through this entire school system from the preschool level. I'd like to thank all the students who spoke today. I'm so utterly proud, and I'd like to thank Superintendent Lee, what you've been asked to do over and over and over again. I can't even imagine. But I wanted to leave you with a word. My family, part of my heritage is we're Finns, we're from Finland, and a word that is very important to Finns is sisu. It's more of a feeling, sisu, but the general definition is extraordinary determination, courage, and resoluteness in the face of extreme adversity. It means guts. And that's what we need here. That's what we've witnessed here from these kids. That's what we've witnessed from these parents, and that's what we need from you. Guts, sisu. When we moved here, my son was in early intervention, and when we told them we were looking to move to a different town, they said, "But we'd really like to live in Braintree, but we don't think we could afford it. Please, please move to Braintree. The school system is phenomenal." And we joked, we all have a long program, but luckily, in twenty-ten, we were able to get a house that needed a lot of work, but we were able to get a foot. When my son started preschool here, he didn't speak very much. He has autism. And one thing I could say for art, when my son, around the age of four, started to color in some form of organized fashion, he started to say a full sentence. So if you're ever questioning the importance of art, it is absolutely tied into language, and I'm a witness. My daughter, who spoke here tonight, who takes four AP classes, also went into the preschool system on an IEP, and they immediately, with occupational therapy, the physical therapy, and speech, were able to reach in and grab her and pull that, this potential out of this kid. And it wouldn't have happened if we weren't in Braintree. I love this town. I did not grow up in this town, but when I was a teenager, I met some incredible people from this town, and I decided I wanted to raise my family in this town. And I am so blessed to live here. And no one knows more struggle, I think, than a parent with kids with special needs. And we, my family in particular, knows what it has to struggle, with money at times, with financial struggle. I'm self-employed. There was a couple of years where I had to carry the whole family. But you gather your guts, you gather your sisu, and you just face adversity, and you just, you do it. And I believe that we can do this. I know this town can do this. I know in the past, it hasn't worked, but that's the past, and there's so many new families here, and they are, they are ready to go. We're ready to go. And this budget doesn't cut it. The eighty-three million is what we need. It really is. And I'm ready to go door to door. I think, from the amount of people that were here at six-thirty, everybody here is ready. We just need some sisu. And I think we can do it. So thank you.
My name's Kevin Penny. I'm a Braintree resident for forty-seven years. I've seen all these overrides get knocked down for different reasons. I went to Braintree High School, class of seventy-eight, when the high school was brand-new. So there was no leaks, there was no power going out, there was none of that. I had three boys go through the school system, best school ever, best school. And just, I have one question. I was waiting all night for somebody to bring up, what is it actually going to cost each individual person? The lady, five ladies ago, I've been waiting four hours to get an answer, and she gave me the answers, but I just wanted to ask you. You're the numbers guy, right?
Somewhat.
Okay. So is that true what she said? It's only going to cost us eight hundred dollars more a year per resident?
It depends on the value of your home and the amount of the override.
But roughly, everybody's going to...
I'd be guessing, because I don't know what the override figure would be. You know, there's a calculator, there's a website for the state that'll tell you how much it is. You plug in Braintree, you plug in the override amount, you plug in the value of your home, it'll tell you how much per family.
It seems like a very small amount. And they're saying, they're saying that the people that were against it are the people that don't have kids. I have no kids in this school. It has nothing to do with me. But I heard a neighbor say to me that she was going to a meeting about this, and I'm saying, "I've never heard of this, and all the time I've been in Braintree, all the time about having this kind of deficit." So I'm all for it. I voted to have the override the other two times, just because it's the schools. Teachers are so important. They're the most important people in the world. They're raising our kids. So I think you need more money. I don't think you need less, teachers in general. But I just wanted to find out about those numbers. I got the answer, so thank you.
My name is Maya Chani Smith, and I came here in the sixth grade as a Metco student. I'm here today as a senior who just got into Boston College. Thank you. And I can say with certainty that this is because of the town's teachers, that I was able to paste a B.C. sticker in my bedroom wall. If you would have told me I'd be here years ago, I would have laughed in your face. Being a Metco student has put me into a world that was, that would otherwise have been simply inaccessible. I went from classes with thirty kids and math problems I could solve as effortlessly as you can blink, to a town where I have enrolled in over nine APs, all to discover my love for writing and science. I say this not to criticize the Boston public schools, but to highlight the strength of your schools, of our schools. It is because of people who taught me and saw me as more than a label, who saw me as more than just an urban address, that I sit here in this room, and I saw the faces who have all left, that I recognize, that I can thank for the person that I have become. My entire experience here, not perfect, how could it be? But the teachers have made it. Sometimes our commute back home leaves me tired but fulfilled, because I have learned so much in Braintree, and I have given to this town as well. Regardless of whether I fit the mold, I was able to receive the one thing that my parents did not have gifted to them, that my neighbors could only wish for, this level quality of an education, a good one. I understand that this issue is bigger than us. It is about bills that we do not have, but I think bills can be made by our townspeople. And to do that, they need an override. We need those ruthless freshmen that wander the halls to learn from some of the most educated persons. We need the arts to enlighten our closed minds. The student reps, well, not only two of them, that have been showered with compliments, and rightfully so, have been taught by our teachers. The failure to override will leave shoes to fill, and they might just be too large. We need a robust override so that this town remains a town that people run to for an education. I came here for an education. We need an override so that students who don't live here make the commute, and so that that commute is worth it. If you are truly pro-education, and you have not just heard, but listened to the countless cries for an override, how can you say that cuts are for the students of Braintree? Thank you.
Hi. My name is Molly Brunel, and I'm a BHS graduate, and now I'm a parent in the ABELS program, and I'm currently studying to be a severe special education teacher. But my question to the school committee is, why? Why would I want to continue in Braintree when the teachers I work side by side with are stretched so thin? On top of being at risk of losing their job, since we are, since we work with the most vulnerable students in the district, and what we do is extreme, and we do with what Sorry. And what we do with extreme limited resources, to limit these resources even further would disservice the most vulnerable students. And as the resources are depleted, our classrooms will pack it, will be packed full, because more additional students will require these services, which in the result of being unable to service these students in district, will resume in them having to spend more, will be having to send more students out of district, up to sixty K per student. Without the public support and voting for an override, the school system will be destroyed, and there will be no return.
Last call for people in the room. Okay, go ahead.
Hi. My name is Barbara McDonald. I'm a Braintree High School graduate and an ABELS parent at Liberty. I cannot stress enough how much eighty-three million dollars will help us. My kids at Liberty don't even have a playground to play outside. They are currently playing on turf ground right now. We're split into two classrooms with six kids and five staff in each classroom. This is unacceptable. Braintree needs to do better. Thank you.
Last call. Anybody in the room? All set? Anybody online?
Rachel?
Rachel, one last try. Can you raise your voice a little so we can hear you? She's not coming through. Okay. So that brings our public hearing to a close. So at this point, I would like to request a motion to close the public hearing on the FY twenty twenty-five budget.
I'll move.
Motion by Ms. Tuffy.
Second.
Second by Mr. Rollo. I do need a roll call vote. Mr. Flaherty. Mr. Rollo. Mayor Joyce.
Aye.
Ms. Tuffy.
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Lynch.
Aye.
Is Rachel there?
I'm here.
Okay. We're trying to close the public hearing. I need you to say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Okay. So with that, at this point, we will move on to the FY twenty-five budget articles before us this evening, which is the seventy-nine million, one hundred nineteen thousand, two hundred and three. I know that there was an amendment that we were interested in adding to this additionally. It's for two hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars, which will cover specials, which could possibly include media at the elementary, art, and music at the high school. Ms. Tuffy.
I would like to make a motion to table voting on the budget articles this evening. I do not feel that the school committee members have enough information on these, on these articles to take a vote. We have been asked to, to look at a moving target over the past few weeks. We don't, even the discussion by people commenting today, they were commenting on programs that are not going to be cut. I was at the finance committee meeting on Thursday, and this budget has changed since Thursday. It is not, we should not be asked to eliminate forty-one positions and programming without fully vetting a budget. We have no idea of what the override amount is going to be at this point. I will say that Hanover is having, is having an override vote. They were, residents were given the two budgets in December to consider, one with an override and one without. Acton, Boxborough is having an override next month. They were presented with two budgets in January, one with an override and one without. I realize that Braintree has changed administrations, and our finance director has changed. However, we, we need more information to be able to make a decision about this. Redistricting was discussed last year, now it's off the table. So I have, I would, I would like this to be postponed at least until April twenty-second.
I have a motion by Ms. Tuffy to table the voting on the budget articles. Do I have a second?
Second.
Rachel Horick, seconds.
I have a second for Mr. Fogarty. Again, have to do a roll call vote. Mr. Fogarty.
I'll put aye, yes.
Mr. Rollo.
No.
Mayor Joyce.
I really think that the committee should do the due diligence to put forward the strongest budget to the mayor, and so if, if members feel the need to further evaluate and do the hard work of evaluating potential cuts and putting forward what they feel like is the strongest budget, I believe they should be offered that time, so I will vote nay, or aye, sorry.
Aye to table. Aye to table. The chair votes no.
Aye.
Nay.
So that is four to three to table. So we will table this until our next meeting, which will be on April twenty-second, and we will revisit the budget. We will reschedule a finance and operations meeting in the meanwhile, and, and discuss it again on April twenty-second, and hopefully vote, because the mayor does have to present a budget on April thir- Mayor Joyce?
I really think that the committee should do the due diligence to put forward the strongest budget to the mayor, and so if, if members feel the need to further evaluate and do the hard work of evaluating potential cuts and putting forward what they feel like is the strongest budget, I believe they should be offered that time, so I will vote nay, or aye, sorry.
Aye to table?
Aye to table.
The chair votes no.
Aye.
Nay.
So that is four to three to table. So we will table this until our next meeting, which will be on April twenty-second, and we will revisit the budget. We will reschedule the finance and operations meeting in the meanwhile, and, and discuss it again on April twenty-second, and hopefully vote, because the mayor does have to present a budget on April thirtieth to the town council. Are we continuing with our agenda at this point? There's only a few other things. Or does everyone want to go home? All right. It's up to you. Approval of open session minutes from March twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-four. Do I have a motion?
Shall move.
I have a motion by Ms. Tuffy.
Second.
Second by Mr. Lynch. Again, roll call votes. Mr. Fogarty?
Aye.
Mr. Rollo?
Aye.
Mayor Joyce?
What is this?
Minutes, approval of the minutes.
Oh, aye.
Ms. Tuffy?
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Lynch? Ms. Horak? Dr. Horak, excuse me? Minutes.
Dr. Horak? Yes.
And the chair votes aye, so that's unanimous. And then just gifts to school, and then we'll be done. Gifts to school. Braintree High School Science Department, gifts to school. One check in the amount of three hundred dollars from the Braintree Rotary as a gift to schools for the credit for life. South Middle School, one deposit in the amount of eight thousand, four hundred and seventy dollars from South Middle School for the Trills and Thrills trip, and for East Middle School, two deposits totaling one thousand, seven hundred and ninety-eight dollars and seventy cents. One deposit in the amount of one thousand, one hundred and twenty from East Middle School to be used towards activities and educational advancement of students, and one deposit in the amount of six hundred, seventy-eight dollars and seventy cents from East Middle School to be used towards activities and educational advancements for students. Do I have a motion to accept these gifts?
Shall move.
Motion by Ms. Tuffy?
Second.
Second by Mr. Lynch. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Sorry, I gotta do a roll. Mr. Fogarty?
Aye.
Mr. Rollo?
Aye.
Mayor Joyce?
Aye.
Ms. Tuffy?
Aye.
Mr. Lynch?
Aye.
Dr. Horak?
Yeah, aye.
And the chair votes aye. With that, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Shall move.
Motion by Ms. Tuffy?
Second.
Second by Mr. Rollo. Again, roll call vote.
Yes.
Mr. Rollo? Mayor Joyce?
Aye.
Ms. Tuffy?
Aye.
Mr. Lynch? Dr. Horak?
I vote aye.
And the chair votes aye. We are adjourned. Thank you all very much.